Hello and good evening, Millis. I'm Loring Barnes. I'm the Chair of the Millis Select Board, and it gives me great pleasure to welcome you to the Monday, February 10th, 2020 public session. My colleagues and I have just returned from executive session, which we will speak about in a minute. Let me introduce, for those of you who are new to this event, to my immediate left is James McCaffrey, our Vice Chair. To his left, your right, is Peter Germain, our Clerk and IT Director extraordinaire. To my right is our Town Administrator, Michael Gazinski, and to his right, your left, is Karen Burey, who keeps all things happening in this building. So first up is that we had 2021 fiscal year departmental budget presentations all day on Saturday, and we see some reprise attendees from those sessions. The value of those sessions was really in the exchange and repartee between the department heads who are advocating for level services and/or specific additional initiatives for which they believe the taxpayers would want to commit funding, because these are either obligations to which we have no choice, because they're state or federal mandated, and/or they are requests from the community that have emerged over time, and they're looking for budget support that would kick in on July 1st. So I want to acknowledge and thank Karen Burey, who stepped into multiple roles for a very productive, but certainly long day on Saturday. And this included actually using the Millis Community Media cellphone to pivot the tripod in an effort to provide for the community video documentation so that you have the ability to be a participant of sorts in the conversation that we had with the town. The upload of that is in progress, we understand, from our friends at Millis Community Media, and we're hoping that they will be up sooner rather than later. There also will be the actual budget document. Apparently, there was a technical challenge in getting that up on the website because of its heft. We want to bookmark it so that people can just scan to the department of interest, but that, in fact, will be done. So I would say, visit back to millis.org, and you will find information about that. And what I would like to do now is invite our Town Clerk, Lisa Harden, who would like to remind our community about upcoming voter registration and election opportunities.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Harden, the Millis Town Clerk. I want to remind the community that the deadline to register to vote for the upcoming presidential primary, the deadline to register, is this Wednesday, February 12th. We'll be open 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can also register online any time that day. This is to register to vote for the presidential primary, which in Massachusetts will be Tuesday, March 3rd, sometimes referred to as Super Tuesday, because so many other states are voting. We have absentee ballots for that election now in our office. You can come in any time the office is open and vote. And we will also have early voting between February 24th and 28th, which is the week before March 3rd. And again, we'll be open all the times that the office is usually open, and in addition to Monday night, we'll also be open on Wednesday night until 7:30, and on Friday, the rest of the town hall closes at 12:30, but we'll be open until 5:30. If you have any questions, you can call our office at 508-376-7046. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
Are you making any effort to try to get signs around town telling people, please, you can vote today, you can early vote, you can get absentee ballots, anything to get the people out to vote?
There is an effort to get some signs out, but it's also a statewide. The dates are statewide, so the Secretary of State's also been putting ads on TV and other places for the 12th has the deadline and that week of early voting. But we'll get additional stuff.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It's a good reminder. And if you have a child in high school who's hitting the magic number of 18, or has since our last election, this is an opportunity to get them in the door, to add them to our voter rolls. I'd just like to add a reminder that everybody needs to remember to complete their census form. That's very important from a budget standpoint. We only receive state money in particular if our census numbers support the dollars that are attached to them on a per-resident basis. Are there any other announcements that either of my colleagues would like to add before we move further into the agenda? All set? Mr. Germain? All set? Town Administrator? All set? Okay, great. We're really thrilled. Sometimes you have to wait for the best, and I think we've waited for the best. And this is with respect to our Board's appointment of our tri-county school representative. The resume, aka curricula vitae, and I would invite our two guests to the table, curricula vitae of the recommended appointee, that is a three-way board appointee, is Jane Harden. She is, and I should say, Masters in Education. She is no stranger to our town. She and her family have been a very important fixture here. Her resume reads like the annals of somebody who's spent their entire life doing 10 professionals' work in the area of higher education. She currently is the Vice Chair of the State Architectural Boards. She's very knowledgeable about Board service, and she also holds a variety of higher education roles at Simmons College. And she's multiply published, and needless to say, she has incredible and impeccable credentials with respect to education. And I think, before I engage my colleagues in our procedural vote, I actually would like to surprise my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, by having him explain the importance of Millis' tri-county representation to the town.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I do want to thank Jane Harden for coming forward and putting her name for the consideration and the committee appointment by the moderator, the School Committee Chair, and the Board Chair. Obviously, the Town of Millis is an active participant in the tri-county regional vocational technical program. We have a number of our students who are there, and we've had some really fine representation from our town for Board members over the years, but we've had a little bit of a vacancy. So it's important for us, as it is important with any group that we participate in outside of the four corners of our town, that we have active participation at the policymaking level, and which is what the School Committee of the tri-county Board is all about. So hopefully, we will get, well, I'm asking you to consider her nomination tonight. Jane has done some of her homework to figure out what the time commitment would be, and she's comfortable with it. So I think the Town of Millis will be well-served by not only having a member, but having a member with as much education experience as Jane Harden. And as is in the past, I'm sure both the School Committee and the Board will welcome her comments over time as she comes back and fills us in as to what's going on in tri-county, what we should be concerned about, and what we should actively participate in. So thanks very much to Jane for her willingness to take on this really important role, which rounds out committee memberships on the education front, if you will.
So seated before us, and I think the camera will now pan to them, are two important citizens of our town, Erin Underhill, who is our Town Moderator, who holds one-third of the appointment power for this particular position, and seated next to her is Mark Conroy, the current Chair of the Millis School Committee, who holds another third. And then, as Chair of the Select Board, I round out the three pieces of the pie. So before we poll and to complete this vote, I think I would like to invite either one of you, probably starting with Mark, as to any comments you might have about tri-county, Millis education, and Jane in particular, anything you'd like to offer. He should pull the microphone.
One, just to echo the appreciation of Jane coming forward and doing this. I've had a few different people over the years. There was one longstanding member, and then it's kind of transitioned a few different times, but having a seat at tri-county with, you know, with all the going on over there, and also, you know, from the perspective even knowing what their budget looks like and how it's developed, and having someone there who understands its impact on the member towns is important. And so it will be great to, yeah, have Jane come to various meetings and give us information and fill us in on also what we can do to help facilitate stuff over there, too.
Thank you. Erin?
Her qualifications make her an excellent candidate. She sounds like she'd be the perfect person for the job. Communication is so very important, so having the right person, somebody engaged and somebody knowledgeable that's going to be able to act as that, go between that point person, the person that can communicate with us what's happening at tri-county, that's going to be very important. So I think this is great that the position's getting filled and that somebody has stepped forward with such great qualifications.
Are there any other comments before we complete the vote?
Just a quick comment that I couldn't be more pleased. This is an individual who has shown merit in every way with respect to scholastics and her identification with the community, living here, growing up with kids and so on in the community. She couldn't be more qualified to accept a position like that, and for that, I think it's a tribute to the three of you to have made the selection and opposed that she take this position.
So I am going to propose that we register our votes on this appointment. I will start with the moderator to indicate with an "I" or an "A" as to your support for, oh, do I have to make a motion to?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I'll just jump the motion part and surprise everybody. Do we have a motion?
Well, the motion's coming. You are the appointing.
Okay. I will make a motion that we, with great appreciation, appoint Jane Harden to be Millis' tri-county school representative.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I will poll the representative voters. Ms. Underhill as the moderator.
Aye.
Mr. Conroy, representing the School Committee.
Aye.
And Ms. Barnes, representing the Select Board.
Aye.
It's a universal "aye," and so, Jane, we're thrilled to have you on board. Thank you very much, and we look forward to a report once you get your sea legs and become immersed in the content. And thank you so much to both of you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to do a little skipping on the basis of who is before us, and going to ask, doing a lot of skipping.
Item 31.
So I think we're going to do item number 31, and that is to open the Town Meeting Warrant for the Spring. Yes, folks, it's going to be the Spring. So, going to work through that.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
It is that time of year again. Being such, I am recommending that the Board vote to open the annual Town Meeting Warrant for the Town Meeting scheduled for Monday, May 11th, 2020, and also to vote to close the annual Town Meeting Warrant effective Monday, February 24th, 2020.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would make the motion, then, that the Board vote to open the annual Town Meeting Warrant for the Spring Town Meeting, scheduled for May 11th, 2020, and also vote to close that warrant effective February 24th, 2020.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The Town Meeting Warrant is now open, and I would encourage the community to pay attention to the variety of upcoming financial-related meetings, because they will be relevant to the Town Meeting proceeding that was just opened. While she is still here, I'm going to move to item number 32, which is the signing of the Presidential Primary Election Warrant. And Ms. Harden, would you like to come forward and just talk briefly about what this is and what you would like us to do?
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. The Presidential Primary Election Warrant is signed by the Selectman, and it gets posted around the community and shows what positions are available on the ballot. It doesn't list all the candidates. So this is the Presidential Primary.
Yep.
And that's all. I'm just asking that you sign it, and then it will get posted.
Okay, I'm holding the document in my hand, and it looks like it requires one, two, three, four, five original signatures, from what I can tell.
Yes. You can sign them at the end of the meeting if you want, or you can sign them now. It's up to you.
Just need a motion to approve.
Yep. Do we have a motion to approve this Presidential Warrant?
Yes. Madam Chair, I have to make a motion that the Board approve the notice of the election warrant for the Presidential Primary on the third day of March 2020, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to our Town Clerk. I'm going to go backward now to Agenda Item 024 and invite with delight Major John Moore from the United States Marine Corps, who is being presented to us by our Town Administrator to inherit the very important role of our Director of Veteran Services, Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very pleased this evening to be able to appoint Major John Moore to the position of Veteran Service Director, and we'll be asking the Board to ratify that appointment. As you know, our Veteran Service Services Director, Cynthia Harris, resigned a number of weeks ago. Upon notice of that upcoming resignation, we did advertise. We did receive three applications for the position, all very capable candidates, but ultimately, the extraordinary background of Major Moore came through, and we did, Selectman Germain, myself, and Ms. Burey did interview the candidates, and it was a good process, and we all agreed that Major John Moore would be the best fit for this position. His dedication and exemplary military service, we feel, positioned him well to assist all the veterans in the Town of Millis. So again, it's with pleasure that I present him to you this evening for the ratification of his appointment.
Before I invite the veteran of our Board to make a motion in the affirmative, I would like to invite Major Moore to introduce himself to the Town, and any comments you would like to offer in the realm of the work that this would entail.
As stated, my name is Major John Moore. I served 20 years in the Marine Corps. I retired three years ago. I currently am a teacher in Boston for Junior ROTC. It's a leadership program in Boston. I've been doing that for the past three years, so it was a pretty easy transition going from the Marine Corps to still wearing the uniform and teaching up in Boston, and I'm just looking forward to being here and helping out my fellow veterans.
So I will just say, before I toss the baton, as it were, to your fellow veteran and our colleague, Mr. Peter Germain, that the major has significantly underestimated the depth and breadth of his credentials and his service to our country. He is multiply decorated. He is a graduate of the Citadel, as well as Boston University. He has a lean Six Sigma certification process and a variety of other security clearances and business achievements as well. He has very impressive awards that I recognize, because I am the sister of a Marine Corps veteran, and I think that to have your new ideas, he happens to live conveniently near Millis, so we're pretty excited about that. But to have your new ideas for Veteran Services, as the demographic is changing and aging both, we're really looking forward to how you can help us to do more and to make sure that we are taking care of not only active duty, you may know that we have a police officer who is active duty right now, who's overseas serving, but also our military veterans and their families. And with that, I'm going to offer Peter Germain from the U.S. Army to speak.
Well, please don't hold that against me, but at any rate, no, I had the opportunity to talk with Major Moore. I was very impressed, not just with his service in the military, but what you've been doing since that time, and that is particularly impressive, taking the time to work with the next generation of youth, some of the youth who have difficulties but need some guidance, and overall, that's very impressive. We have a number of needs in this community, and I think you can add substantially to what we have as a growing community for the needs that can be met by what you have for background in that area. So I couldn't be happier. I welcome you, and I wish you the very best in that area. And I do not hold it against you that you're in the Marines. To be very frank, I can't be more frank than I was very pleased when I was serving overseas to be working with any number of Marines, and I've served actually under them in a number of capacities. It's a privilege to have you in this community.
Thanks, sir.
I think it would be appropriate to invite you to make a motion.
I will.
Oh, no, you made the motion.
No, no, I just wanted to say that I would recommend that the appointment just be made with the two caveats. He just has to, we just have to go through a quarry and a physical as procedure, but otherwise.
Quarry could be dicey.
It's all set.
You might have had one for.
You've had a few. I'm looking at NATO, Department of Defense. I'm pretty.
Not particularly concerned, but it's procedurally, I would have to advise. Nothing like teaching in high school, though, right?
Yeah.
Probably more thorough.
You got the quarry, and what was the other?
A physical.
Yeah, which, by the way, that's also registered on his resume of great, very impressive credentials, because it's something that he continues to teach, so.
I'm sure they'll send you through another PCPT on the process. Okay. At any rate, I'd like to move that we accept Major Moore as our new Veterans Agent, effective immediately, with the conditions that he must pass the physical and quarry to accept the position fully.
So I would second the motion that we ratify the Town Administrator's appointment. Technically, it's his appointment, but we have to approve it.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are delighted to welcome you to Millis, and let me say in public session that between now and our Spring Town Meeting, once you get your sea legs, not that a Marine has sea legs, but nonetheless, if you could come back with kind of your early assessments and indicate, you know, maybe an abbreviation to 100-day plan, kind of what you think you would like to tackle heading into our Memorial Day commemorations, and we're thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in. Have a great night.
Can we just invite you up?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Don't let me be rude.
Thank you very much.
We're thrilled. We're thrilled. Thank you so much. Yay. Congratulations. Looking into the audience, I'm going to invite Mr. Weiss to come up and for review and approval of gasoline and diesel fuel pricing from September 1 of this year through August 31st of 2001.
Yes, that is correct. And Robert Weiss, the Energy Manager for the Town. Yes, a little bit of good news. Gas today in the Boston metropolitan area is about $2.53 a gallon, which is pretty low, as we know. But we have an opportunity here to take advantage of a pretty volatile market, and we just happen to catch it at a good time. This is usually when we get the offer from the Norfolk County Consortium to join them and purchase a year's worth of gasoline. And as you said, it starts this September 1st, and it goes through the 31st of August. So what we're asking for tonight is to give the Town Administrator and myself a chance tomorrow morning to sign a contract. The prices are volatile, of course, as we know, so they may change. They actually changed this morning. They actually went down this morning from this. Not too much, though, but we're asking for a $0.05 per gallon window on that. So that is what we're coming, I'm coming to ask you for tonight. A little bit of good news.
We appreciate good news coming out of a budget hearing. Any conversation with colleagues?
Madam Chair, Bob, just clarify that when we sign on the dotted line, when September 1 comes, that's the price.
That is correct.
For the following year. So the volatility is between now and September 1. We never know where that's going.
Right.
But we're blocking into a number with a little bit of a window there.
Right.
For a year, once we hit September 1st.
That is right.
So I ask everybody to cease driving, so we can drive the cost of gasoline down even further, or maybe not. But again, this is a very good, very good outcome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments or a motion?
Claude, the work you've done to find these prices and to work with the consortium.
Thank you. Well, it really wasn't much work on my part. They just called me up yesterday and said, here's the new contract.
And you said yes.
Yes. They called me up on Friday, so I said, call you Monday.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
So I make a motion to approve the one-year contract, purchase gasoline through the Norfolk County Consortium at the price of $2.17.9 per gallon, and diesel fuel, $2.34, with a window to allow for an increase of no more than $0.05 per gallon. The contract will be effective September 1st, 2020, through August 31st, 2021.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We thank our Director of Energy for that opportunity for savings.
What are we spending now? What is this year's contract?
224. I think we're actually at 224 this year.
So we are getting additional savings.
We're getting some great savings.
Even from this year.
Yes. Yeah.
While Karen is setting up for our Building Commissioner, I'm going to move to Agenda Item 034, and also 035, which both have our Town Administrator's name on them. Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, this year, we do have four elections taking place in calendar year 2020. This will require the appointment of quite a number of different election workers. I am requesting, in order to streamline this process and prevent any unnecessary delays, requesting that the Board vote to grant me the authority to appoint, without further ratification, election workers for calendar year 2020. I think this was done once in the not-so-distant past. Happy to answer any questions that you have. I know the Town Clerk is still here as well, so.
I'm just curious about how many people you expect to hire, and is there still an opportunity for people to participate?
Those are great questions, of which I would probably defer somewhat to the Town Clerk. She has a better idea of the election workers that are either in the docket or will be needed moving forward.
Yes?
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. It is my understanding that the, that election workers that we had already, that had already gone through the employment process, were appointed last June for a year. So this would be just appointing additional people. We're always open to new recruits. There is some training involved, so you don't necessarily jump right into a particular position that you're interested in right away. I believe, right at the moment, we have seven people that we want to get appointed, but they're, sometimes at the last minute, we need to have people appointed that day because people didn't, were sick or for some other reason couldn't come. But it's a small number right now, but there, we're always open to new people coming in and getting on the list.
So they should just come to the Town Clerk's office and get on a list and then wait to hear, kind of thing? Is that what you?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other comments? I know one of you has experience with this through your spouse. I know one of you has experience with this through your spouse.
One step removed, right, yes. Always, it's an exciting opportunity for folks, frankly, to participate in this most core function of a democracy. And the good news is that Lisa and the team do a great job. I'm not going to jinx anybody in any way, shape, or form, but this is not.
We won't be jinxed.
This is not Iowa.
Everything is going to be run perfectly.
Okay.
So do we have a motion? Do we need a motion? Yes.
Yes, I just asked the board to make a motion to authorize the town administrator the authority to appoint election workers for calendar year 2020 without further ratification.
Mr. Jermaine?
I'll so move what he just.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to appoint election workers for calendar year 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if we can, we might as well just do the sign. Well, I can see our building commissioner is getting his papers in order, so approval of a sign license agreement at Dover Road, which is the site of the future, but I don't know the story at this point, assisted living project. Mr. Gazinski.
Yes, in your packet is a license agreement for the sign that was proposed by the.
Did you each have a copy in front of you?
Yeah, we each have a copy, yeah.
Sorry.
No, I haven't.
That was proposed by the owners of the property at, by Barbary Homes. And this would, this license would grant them the ability to place a sign, as was reviewed by the board. And this agreement has been approved as deformed by our town council. And so it's not to be repetitive. I will simply ask if there are any questions in regards to the license agreement. I would certainly strive to answer those.
I don't think so.
This is what we had asked for, so.
Yep.
You're not just granting them an unlimited right to put a sign up. They have to have a license and.
It's a license, which is basically revocable.
Something happens that they don't live up to the agreement, then we can ask them to remove it.
Right. Question. Do they have a detail on the sign they want to put up yet, or no?
I believe.
It was proposed to be a lot like the sign that we have out front here at Town Hall, and like the police department and the fire department, they want a wooden sign, something similar.
Don't mention.
I have the sizes, yeah, I have the dimensions.
Well, we're giving them a license about the sign. They have to follow the requirements that the building inspector would.
Correct. So the next step will be to see you after this is approved.
I just want to make sure you don't approve something that's not.
No, approving is just for the license, so they have a, they have a legal authority to actually put a sign up there. They still have to follow the town regulations on signage.
I would say they have the license, put on a complying sign, not just any sign.
Good work.
Especially since our building commissioner is seated before us. We have a motion to approve this license.
Zoning enforcement.
So moved. I move we approve the license.
Second.
Are you going to sign it, Mike? No, the board signed it, to be signed by the board.
Yes, you have to sign it.
Yeah, the board would sign this, yes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a sign license between Barbary Homes.
Everyone's wondering, is that my car?
Yeah. And.
Mine's a truck.
And the town of Milis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Gazinski, item number 026, which I believe the building commissioner would like to have knocked off before his budget presentation, is the appointment of an interim wiring inspector. Many of you know that the town, after some 30 years of service, said farewell and good luck to Dave Byrne, who is retiring. So, Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, a longtime and dedicated wiring inspector, David Byrne, retired back on February 1. I have had a number of conversations with the building commissioner to determine the best path forward in, you know, with the department as a whole and in filling this position. Following those discussions, I believe the commissioner and I both believe that this is an opportune time to make some positive changes to the operation of the building department, and in particular, the inspection division. And Mr. Jim Pietro will be putting, forwarding and presenting his budget to you this evening. But in light of the recent changes, I think we both think it's prudent to delay the hiring of a new permanent wiring inspector until July 1 of 2020, until the changes are fully put into place. Therefore, I wanted to notify the board that I am appointing Michael G. Pietro as the acting wiring inspector for the town of Milis for the period ending June 30, 2020. And this evening, I'm requesting the board's ratification of that appointment. Mr. Jim Pietro has gracefully agreed to take on these additional duties with no additional compensation to himself. Jennifer Sweet, who's still acting, is still the deputy wiring inspector, will continue to handle the vast majority of the wiring inspections during this time period. So I'm sure the building commissioner and I are both very willing to answer any questions you have about this appointment.
Well, I would like to thank the department head of the building department for proposing a cost savings to the town. That's a great way to start a budget presentation. Do my colleagues have any questions, concerns, or like to make a motion?
I just think it's important to note that we appreciate the fact that you're willing to step in and do this on a temporary basis at no additional cost.
Says the professional who does that on a daily basis for the town.
Would you like to be the IT director, too?
Yeah, going, going, gone. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the town administrator's appointment of Michael G. Pietro as the acting wiring inspector for the town of Milis for the period ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carries with our gratitude. Thank you very much, Mr. G. Pietro. And this rolls right into Agenda Item Number 027, which is the Building Department Fiscal Year 21 Budget Presentation, for which we are delighted to have our building commissioner, Mr. G. Pietro, here to hit the highlights for the community. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So in front of you, you do have the budget, which I prepared for you, and the narrative doesn't change. And anybody who doesn't know what the building department does, what we do is it's a statutory requirement, which every city in town of the Commonwealth is required to do. And we enforce zoning laws, building permits, building laws, electrical permits, plumbing and gas, and sheet metal, and everything that's included for statutory regulations is what, what the building department does. Without getting into the nitty-gritty of day-to-day, you all know that the building department has been extremely busy in these past couple of years. And we all knew with previous budgets that in, and what was coming for the town for building, and it is upon us, right? So we have a lot of building going on. And as you can see in my Exhibit A, and I have a personnel plan change. As you can see, Exhibit A, 9C and 8A, that's what the personnel plan shows now. And I'm going to go over what the proposed changes are. We had reorganized the building department. Oops. How's that?
Read closer.
Forward.
Yes, sir.
Much.
Thank you.
Okay. We reorganized the building department because we, we went from paying electrical and plumbing and gas from half the permit fee to a, a inspection-based fee. We went. And changed the whole makeup and required Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday inspectors to be there, so everybody could be accessible. So now that we can, we can finish that, come full cycle with that, since Mr. Byrne has retired, the Monday evenings is not necessary, and the stipends have been changed to be in line with the plumbing inspector, as we had originally had wanted everything to fall into place there when we started the change of the department. You can see, reorganized the electrical department by creating one main wire inspector, who will be required to meet Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday office hours, and creating two deputy wire inspectors to fill in for inspections and any unavailability by the wire inspector. This was the original goal from the department, FY 2020 reorganization with the plumbing. However, electrical was not approved to change. So now I'm proposing that we do change it. The electrical inspector compensation for the stipend will change from $4,931 to $6,280. The first wire inspector stipend will change from $3,075. The deputy will be now a deputy wire inspector. That will go down to $600. The second deputy wire inspector stipend will change from $1,184 to $600. The plumbing and gas inspector stipend was $63.96. That will change to $62.80, small decrease. The first deputy gas inspector was $5.92 to $600. Second deputy was $5.92 to $600. Assistant building commissioner stipend, last budget was $12,792. That will change to $12,280. And I am also proposing to add a local building inspector for a stipend of $600. See Exhibit A for the above changes, and the personnel plan change at town meeting. So also, line item for the inspector compensation, we had put a number of $45,000 to pay the inspectors per inspection, for the $40 per inspection. And I'll be going Wednesday night to ask for some, for some more funding for that, for the $45,000 has been relinquished. So I am proposing to put $90,000 in there for this budget cycle, so we don't run out of any money. We, we came up with a $45,000 number, just, it was just a, an educated guess. And, you know, with the inspections that were done and the construction that has been ongoing and moving at a fast rate, the, you know, the, the lineup got depleted pretty quick. So I propose to put $90,000 just to, for the, for the next fiscal year. Also, I put another $500 for mileage, went from $2,500 to $3,000 for the expected increase of workload that will come upon us. So you're going to, one thing I wanted to explain is the numbers of the stipends. So the stipends were figured out for the, you know, the wire inspector and the plumbing and gas inspector and the assistant building commissioner. Those were three days a week, one hour, one hour per day, three hours a week. And we did the $40 per hour for the stipend. And if they don't show up, if somebody doesn't show up, they, they sign in and sign out every time they come in, and then they won't be paid if they're not here. So we counted the amount of, the number of days and the number of hours for the whole fiscal year, and that's how we came up with those numbers. So there probably, there will be some times where an inspector won't be there, and a deputy inspector will fill in that position for the day or two while the other inspector is not there. So we carry just the $600 fee, just so that would make them cover the cost. Again, they have to, that $600 depletes on the amount of time that they're actually in the office. So if they spend a minimal amount of time, they'll get $40 per hour that they're in the office, and it'll come off of that, that number. So we calculated throughout the whole year how many hours, and that's how we came up with those numbers. Now, the assistant local, I'm adding a local building inspector stipend because of the amount of workload. So there's myself, there's the deputy commissioner, which is Gary Pelletier, and his compensation is up at Toe Brothers. He's, he's here on Monday nights, and he's at Toe Brothers during the week, in the morning at 7:00, and in the afternoons. So his figures are while he's there as well. And they get $40 per inspection. So that's how all those numbers came out to be as they are. So you will see a decrease, an overall decrease from last budget. We made some changes and corrections while we figured it out last budget season. We had, if you can recall, we had some, some issues to make sure that people are here so they get paid. And that's how we came up with those numbers. If, again, if somebody's not here for their stipend or for their hourly time they're supposed to be here, they won't get paid for it. And all the inspections are paid $40 per inspections, and we have a paper trail that was instituted last budget season, that every inspector gets a three-part form when they go out and do the inspection. The builder, the homeowner, whoever they're out doing the inspection for, gets the top portion with the result of that inspection. The yellow portion goes into the file, so everybody knows. And the department assistant can calculate all the inspections for the month through those yellow slips. And then the pink slip is that of the inspector keeps for their records. So that system has been working out very well. I know it's not a computer system. I know I'm a guy who likes paper and pencil. I can count what I got in front of me, not look at it, and then I know what I have. So it's been working out well, and I want to take the time to thank Liz for all her hard work that she's put in and been doing for the department to keep everything straight. So going forward, if we look at Form 2, Form 2 translates everything that I've highlighted through the spending highlights, and you can see the positions and carried over the figures that I just laid out to you, and then the total that it comes out to be, and how we calculated all of that. That's the Form 2. And.
So are these benefited positions, or no, because they're stipend positions?
No, they're not benefited. The only benefited position is myself, the department assistant, and everybody else's stipend positions. Now, you know, most certainly, I could have asked for a full-time building inspector. It's definitely warranted from the amount of work, the amount of revenue that we're taking in, the amount of permits we're doing, amount of inspections we're doing. However, you know as well as I know, being around long enough, especially in this business, whatever goes up, comes down. So if you, if you appoint, put in a full-time building inspector and things slow down, then you have an issue of maybe overpaying, and then dealing with that down the road. This way, how I looked at it, in this aspect, is you have someone available with a stipend that costs you $600 a year, right, to keep that person here. And then we use them to do inspections. We don't have, you know, you're not paying them health insurance, you're not paying them all the other benefits that go with it. If you were to hire, if I was in here asking, I need another full-time local, you know, to help do all the work. They can do the same amount of work. We need him to go out there, be in the field, and, and it's, they get compensated on the work they do by inspection. So I felt as though that this is a more advantageous for the town, for money-wise, and how we can deal with personnel. And, and I would, I would recommend to the board that if the economy goes the other way, this is a much more advantageous approach than it would be to put somebody on full time. So that's why I've done what I did and presented it the way I did. There's, there's a few people in town that have their local certifications that, that I've mentored through the building department to become building officials. So when we, when we put that out, if the board approves it, town meeting approves it, then we can put it out, the position for, for advertisement, and I'm sure that will get qualified people. There is a big problem throughout the state for qualified building officials. There's not enough building officials to fill all the seats out there. I did take a stat from the MFBO and the B.O.C.C.
Which stand for?
Which stand Mast Federation of Building Officials, and the B.O.C.C. is the Building Official Certification Committee.
Thank you.
So it's a, Building Official Certification Committee is a spinoff from the Building Board. of Regulations and Standards, in which we oversee building officials' certifications. We approve building officials to be certified. So there's 343 inspector of buildings out in the Commonwealth that are active. And then there's and every building, every city in town needs an inspector of building, a building commissioner. So you can see that there's there's not every city in town is covered. I know out in the west part of the state, one person might do two or three towns. There are 242 locals, and these are active. So there's not an abundance of certified, trained building officials that are available. But in this town, we do have a few that would be looking for a position like like I am proposing to fill in as needed, and not take a, you know, full-time job because they got contractors' businesses, and they got other stuff going on. So I just wanted to stress that point and and explain to you why I went that route. So I guess that leaves us, and everybody's seen Exhibit A, right? So that's the proposal to change the personnel plan, that I create a town meeting, a warrant article to do that, right? So I've laid it out in Exhibit A. Now, we go through our, you get that up there? The budget?
For A?
Yeah, the very first one you had up there.
Oh, you want the first one?
Yeah, that little green covered thing.
Okay.
No, no, not the first one. The first one you had, see this one?
Oh, yeah.
The main budget.
Budget. So inspections and code enforcement, personnel services, you see the salary for department head, salaries for clerical, and then inspector compensation, you see it went from 45,000 to 90. And that's to cover inspections, like I indicated. We may or may not use it all, depends how construction goes. Wages from fees, that line item went out, went out, and that's zero. Longevity is 1050, and stipends come out to 27,840. So a total of 25859. And a big chunk of that is for inspector compensation, which translates to the inspector pay per inspection. Supplies and expenses, carried 3,000. And postage carried 175, like I normally do. Do some subscriptions, stated 350. Meetings is at 2750. That went up just a little bit, so we can cover the mandated continuing education requirements for all the inspectors. And then the auto mileage reimbursement went from 2,500 to 3,000. So we got 261,3496. Yep, total. Now, a couple of some projects we've got coming up that haven't been started yet. As we were talking about the assisted living, we don't know when that's going to come, but we assume that's going to be coming shortly. And it looks like it should be starting, from what I hear, next fiscal year. We have a storage facility, two building. One is a single-story, another building is a three-story. That's where the old junkyard was, that's coming. Had some inquiries about another marijuana grow facility at Colt Manufacturing. You got Tom Roach, he's got 18 units coming. Bob Barelli's got the 10 units coming. Acorn Place is still an active construction site with the over 55. It's started moving along. Ridge Street subdivision is, I think, 39 lots there, ready to go, probably in the spring. Carter Jav is another roughly 30, almost 40 lots there. The Toll Brothers, we've issued 90 building permits to date. They have 29 COs as of today.
CO means?
Certificate of Occupancy. And so they're just about, they're going at a good clip, they're selling them faster than they thought they would. 114 Union Street is a multi-unit building, they're going to be knocking down the old Herman Shoe Building and building three buildings instead of using that one old building. Several engineers went in there and verified that the building is not safe to keep. That's why they have to knock it down. So there's another four-lot subdivision called Rivendell Woods, which is off of Causeway Street. And then the normal, you know, additions, decks, and kitchens and bathrooms, and one or two lots here or there. So Melissa's is busy, a lot of things are happening. Let's see, revenue, I do everything by calendar year, so I know that's a little bit different than the fiscal year. So let's see. Calendar year, the sum for 2019 was $546,298.4 for revenue that the building department took in. 2018 calendar year was 323,664, and 2017 was 306. So you can see where 2019 was a big jump, and we steadily went up from 16, 17, 18. And that that reflects on the amount of permits that come in and we issue, and that's all permits. And the permits issued, let's see, 2019, total department number of permits was 1347, 2018 was 1073, and 2017 was 964. So that's going backwards. So we expect in 2020 either the same number or more, the way construction is going. So that should wrap up all my paperwork. I mean, oh, there's one over here. Carol and Mike email me this one. This is the building department receipts July 2019 to January 2020.
Fiscal year to date.
Fiscal year, so they threw me a curveball on this one. So and I believe me, I called them right away. I says, what's this?
Every year, you're going to have to calculate the numbers the way we do.
Okay.
The rest of the year, you're fine.
Still in training.
Still in training. Try to teach an old dog a new trick. We're working on it, right, Mike?
Absolutely.
So, let's see, 2020, all right, Mike, can you explain this?
So the finance director provided the building department receipts for July 2019 through January 2020. You'll see that the actual year-to-date receipts, the green column, show 332,753. Again, that's only seven months into the year, so we're on track to exceed the estimated receipts, which were $498,627. So we're exceeding expectations or projections of the the permit receipts for the year. So we've collected 66% of our, well, I don't know if, Carol, you have anything else to go over on this, or has that pretty much covered? Okay.
Now, is this the gross fees, net of, or is it the net fees?
This is the gross, gross fees.
Okay, so, but this is the building permits as opposed to the wiring?
Well, they're all the permits.
This is all the permits.
So this is not pure profit?
No.
This is the revenue generated?
But on the other hand, this is what allows them to cover the fat, the salaries that he's looking for.
I know. Exorbitant.
Exorbitant, though they are, I mean.
Well, the total departmental expenditure is 260-something. That's a request.
Yeah, at this current rate, say, a rough estimate of the actual permit fees for the entire fiscal year would be in the 575 to 600,000 range.
So we're spending 206,000 to get 600,000 back, roughly. Now, that doesn't count the reserve fund transfer you're going to go looking for.
Well, that's, yeah.
Because you have to. You run out of money.
We're out of money, right.
We can't pay our inspectors, so.
Right, it's current fiscal year.
But on the other hand, this becomes the offset at some future date.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if you went with the 90,000, 95,000, I'm sorry, the $90,000 number for 2021, the total departmental budget request is 260,000.
With that, yeah.
Again, against a revenue of 500,000 to 600,000. I mean, because we don't, no one knows. But 2021 is not likely to be the down year.
Right.
Now, can you just tell me off the top of your head, if you can, if the assisted living project goes forward, at what point in time do they actually get the permit to proceed?
Well, they have all the site work done.
Yeah.
The road is in.
They get a building permit.
So they're going to come in, their next avenue is come in for a building permit.
And that would be before they've started building the building?
Before they dig the hole, build the building, they need a building permit.
That'll be based upon the value, the cost of construction. Yeah, and that you think is going to be?
Depends on what it is, whether they give us.
Generally speaking, we're talking about a six-figure permit fee.
Yeah, some, yeah, we're talking about a six-figure, but we don't know exactly what it is, until we actually see the contract.
Just, but to but to give people some sense of what's at stake, as opposed to a?
What did they estimate the the construction cost? They had, they given it to us at one time, I think it was what?
Yeah, based on that.
Five million?
Yeah, well, based on what they'd given us, I think we'd estimated somewhere in the 500,000.
500,000 for a permit, yeah.
For the permit.
Permit fee, yeah. That's just the building permit fee.
That's the building permit.
It's like 120 units, I think.
Yes.
Well, it's based on, when you get, when you get over
Right.
Cost of construction, so.
Right.
The building official has the authority through the building code to, you know, before they give you an occupancy permit, to request an AIA document, which which gives you the breakdown of how much they actually spent. So before we give them an occupancy permit, we always can go, you know, they can give us an estimate.
Right.
And prior to them getting an occupancy permit, they can say, this is our actual cost, and it could be over.
So we're looking at the potential for that permit to come on board during FY '21.
Yeah.
Now, we thought it was going to come on FY '20.
But it didn't, good thing it didn't.
So.
Thank you.
And then the, but we have collected building permit fees from 90 units at Toll Brothers.
Yes.
So, okay.
And we got.
And we don't know what the pace is going to be, but they're still looking at a 320-something unit project.
Yep.
So it's, again, we don't know, but it's fairly, not likely is the wrong term. Expectation might well be that that pace will continue, not decline.
Right.
But the big enchilada is the assisted living.
Is living, then you got, don't forget, the 40B permits.
The 40B project, that's another big building.
You got the other storage project, that's going to be
Yeah.
You know, that's going to be a million plus, $2 million to build that.
So, anyway, all right. I just want to make, I mean, I want to be able, you to be able to share with the public exactly what is coming, not only what you've done already, but what's coming. And if the, if the, if we got about a half a million, well, slightly more than half a million, well, around a half, 550,000 roughly, of building per, building department receipts for the current, for the fiscal year, '20, while we're in.
Right.
One building
Covers the whole thing.
Could cover that next year, we don't know. Now, obviously, you could perhaps go out and buy some extra doughnuts for the team.
We don't need any doughnuts.
But other than that.
It's bad for the sugar.
The money goes to the, yeah, not for you, for the team.
Yeah, yeah, well, temptation is great.
Yeah, I know. Okay, and I want to count my chickens before they've, you know, because that's, it's like, Toll Brothers, real estate taxes is right around the corner, marijuana is right around the corner, building permits are right around the corner, that corner is really going to be quite a corner when we get around it. But I want to point out that the revenue generation from this department is substantial and looks to continue to be substantial for the foreseeable future. Without really a very, I mean, the budget request is, looking at it from that perspective, it's pretty, I don't call it modest, responsible.
Conservative budget.
Yeah.
I have a question. I know that I'm dealing with a pencil man, and you do amazing work. But I'm just wondering about if you would be in fact kicking and screaming if part of this fantastic business performance would in any way fund online technology for permit applications and tracking and things like that, so that it's an option for taxpayers who don't want to have to come in or can't come in or anything like that. I mean, I understand that you have a system of doing it, but we also have heard requests for people who have said, we think it would be great. We had a presentation a year ago, maybe even longer, by a company that, you know, you can be at home in your bunny slippers, or you can, you know, be obviously off-premises, and you can literally track the stage in which your permit is simply by logging on. So I'm wondering.
So let me enlighten you on that.
Okay.
The technology, technology is okay, right? But for this particular instance, here's the negatives, all right? Some months ago, not that long ago, five, six months ago, I had a owner of a condominium complex come in and says, Mike, I'd like to have an inspection on our windows that we put in. And I says, oh, where's that? So he told me where it was, and it didn't sound familiar, says, let's go look at the files. So you don't have a building permit, right? And he said, we don't? I says, nope. He said, well, the management company says, you know, they're going to get the permit. I said, well, who's the management company? Let's call them, call them up. Management company says, oh, yeah, the contractor got the permit. I said, okay, said, email me the contract. They emailed me the contract with the contractor's license number on it and everything, said that they're going to get the permit. Called the contractor, contractor answered the phone, says, oh, yeah, the management company's getting the permit. I said, ah, I said, I got you covered. I already talked to them, and I have a contract right in front of me, says, you're getting the permit. Oh, must have been a misunderstanding. He says, I'm sorry. He said, well, he says, my father died, so I'm a little bit behind, so I said, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I says, I'll leave the permit application on the counter, and I'll highlight everything you need to do. Come and get it, and pay, you're going to have to pay double permit fee, right? And it's important, and I tell you, this is the difference. So we waited for him for about a week, week and a half. Finally, he showed up. Again, he says, sorry, I'm late. I said, well, here's the application, fill it out, here's the fee, and says, I highlighted everything for you. I forgot my checkbook. I was going to, on my way to another job, he says, all right. I said, I understand your problem here, take the application and go and come back and give us the check. Well, off he went, never heard from him. Called him up, no answer back. So I called the state, and I'm looking at, for the license number on the internet, can't find the license number. So I called Kim Spencer at the state. She has the very first license that was issued. So I talked to her on the phone, tell her, give her the license number. She goes, he's deceased. I go, I know. I says, you know, I says, the guy's, he's deceased, and she says, yeah. She says, his father just died, so last week. I said, I feel bad. She goes, no, he's been deceased for 15 years. I'm like, what? And I says, oh, okay, all right. So now, now I got a problem. That guy, who knows how many permits he's been applying for online? It's a window permit, roof, easy things you could do right from your house, like you said, right? Easy permits, there are windows, doors, roofing, siding, all that stuff, yeah, you just come out, do one inspection, and he's been doing that for 15 years, right? So we put out a bulletin to all the other building departments, watch out for this guy. I filled out a complaint against him, right? Came back, Patty Barry calls me up, she goes, where's the application? Because under the application says, and the pains and penalties of perjury. And I'm like, oh, I've just been had. So he has the application, he never brought it back. So now this poor guy who owns a condominium complex, the law says who's ultimately responsible for the work? The owner. So now I had to go back to the owner, go, look, you're responsible for it, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to hire another contractor to take over the job, you're going to have to pay them. Then, once I issue him a permit, then we'll come out and look at it. So the moral of that story is, you know, anybody can do anything online. And another thing which is going on in the state is construction supervisors licenses. In 2009, there were 68,000 of them, right? As of January 1, 2018, it's 42,000. And with the internet, they're stealing other people's license numbers, and they're making licenses that with their picture on it, and they're applying for permits. You do that online, I like to see everybody in front of me, right? Let me see your license. If somebody has to wait, they got to wait, but I can catch them now. If, if somebody has to wait, they gotta wait, but I can catch them that way. So that's how I like to do business, when the next guy comes and he wants to do it online, then everybody can cheat when he's here. How's that?
Well, I appreciate you sharing the story with your trademark color commentary.
Well, it's the second time you asked me, so I figured I had to tell you.
But in open session, but in open session, um, I think it's tremendous, I, since we're here, and it relates to the work that you've done, could you just share with the community, provide the expert update as to the gas station, because people ask, post?
They're building a gas station?
Yes.
Yeah, it's under construction.
Yes, listen.
On Main Street, right?
On Main Street, yeah.
West.
Oh, I just gave him a fifty dollar fine for starting early the other, last week, so if everybody, anybody sees him working there before seven, send me an email.
Okay.
Right, so that's the starting time for our construction, seven o'clock. So I think he's got the picture, that's the second fine I gave him, so.
Is there anything else you would like to share with the town in the, in your inimitable style?
Unless you have any more questions for me.
Any questions for our building commissioner?
I don't have any more.
I have one, 'cause, you know. Are there other laws that are coming into enforcement in this calendar year that people should know about?
The energy code.
Yes.
Oh, where's Bob?
Bob's behind. He's right behind you.
We're, we're putting a, uh, matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with the BBRS, the, um, uh, there's a, there's a couple senate bills out, that's, uh, I'll call them a fast-track bill. One of them's called, um, I think it's the Next Generation Climate Plan, which looks to, to mandate what they call net zero. And mandate, um, all public vehicles to be electric vehicles by, I think, twenty forty. And then by twenty fifty, there's another benchmark, well, good thing about twenty fifty, I won't be here. But we have a meeting tomorrow regarding that with the BBRS and, and some of the house bills that's, that's being on the fast track for energy. So if all this stuff goes through, there'll be a significant change in the energy code, in which seems to be taking precedence over how we build things, in my opinion, I wanna make sure the building's safe for occupancy, and then energy code comes second, but that's the general opinion of the building officials.
Is there anywhere where, where a layperson at home should look, or to keep track of this as it might affect their future building plans?
You can go online, uh, let's see, OPSI, Office of Public Safety and Inspections, Massachusetts OPSI. So that the, we used to be in the Department of Public Safety, uh, two years ago, the governor took us out and put us in Department of Professional Licenseure, and they, he created a division called OPSI, Office of Public Safety and Inspection, so. That's where everybody can go for information, they post a lot of that stuff right on their own site, so.
All right, I won't ask any other questions, either any of the questions.
No, we're on a roll, come on.
No particular question, but I do wanna comment that Mike is, and his office are excellent in terms of if you're going to do any building and so on, go in and see him, talk with him, he'll give you some good advice. And then he'll give you other advice while you're going in also, but having worked with him on several occasions, I applaud him and say, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The building officials are supposed to be there to help you, you know, help you through the process, we wanna make sure that you get, you, you obtain code compliance, you do it right. And, you know, there are different, you know, building officials comes from different ways of life, when you go to city, different towns, there are some building officials there that never built anything, and they just look at the book, so they don't know the practicality of doing stuff. So, um, I've been in construction since I was sixteen, so, uh, it's my view and.
Ten years, huh?
Yeah, 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 thank you. So I try to, try to help people, and again, you're right, anybody has any questions before you do anything, come in and see me. Give me a phone call, I'll be more than happy to meet with you, we have a list of contractors from the local area, up on our board, that you can call and get estimates from, uh, we can give you recommendations that way, um, so, yeah, please, please feel free to come in and give us a call.
Mr. Fuze.
Thank you, Scott Fuze, 411 Union, I just wanna thank Mike, he's been with the town a long time, I think he knows this stuff, he has a good relationship with the fire chief, and previous fire chiefs, I think there's a lot of construction in town, I think his department's been very busy with the construction of Glen Allen, that's one of the biggest projects that we, is, in the school, and, and the future projects he named tonight, so, and I appreciate him stepping up as temporary wire inspector, I think it's, uh, I think, you know, it's, it's a lot to take on, but I think, you know, no one can better do it than Mike, and I appreciate what him and his department do, keeping the town safe, responding to emergencies when they happen, 'cause any, any, any of that could happen at any time, so. Thank you, Mike, and if I see anyone starting early, I'll come in and tell you, I won't go online, I won't send you an email. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions? We appreciate you coming in tonight, sir, thank you very much.
Forward to you taking over the technology department.
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations.
Wrong guy for that, let me tell you.
Because we had a great goon-baya moment tonight, doesn't mean we're gonna approve your budget, okay?
That's okay, no problem.
As the town knows, I, agenda item O two eight, and we are remarkably on schedule, see if we can keep it that way. The town leadership has been publicly addressing the reality of our town sewer capacity, which has a direct impact on the previous topic, which is growth through building. And our DPW director, Jim McKay, I guess alongside our town administrator, are here to share an update as to where we are now. Mr. McKay.
Thank you. The update is probably the shortest time I'll probably stand at the podium, we're not ready at this moment. We have a scheduled meeting this Thursday with Town Council in the Charles River Pollution District, the executive director and her staff engineer. I have, they would like to come and speak with you at your next meeting, if that's appropriate, and if you're invited. Or you can push them out, they'd be, whenever you'd like them to come, they'd be more than happy to come. And answer the questions that the board has proposed to me through them, and they'll answer them. But Town Council is more, has a list of questions that I've, we have come up with, with, with the town administrator and myself.
So at this point, just as a recap, we've had presentations given by our town engineer, Mike Carter, of GCG Engineering, which indicates that the mandated formulas that provide for us access to sewer system and flow capacity is on paper actually past capacity.
Correct.
And so what we're trying to do is figure out, determine some strategies, um, that are fairly complex, I don't think there's an easy one among them, to identify ways for us to improve the cost per ratepayer while determining how it is we can navigate within a system that is beyond our control, where we are looking at so much upcoming development. But we are required to follow the laws and the policies with respect to our capacity access, does that sound accurate?
That's absolutely correct, that's, we're, we're at our capacity without permitted and our promised amount, what's been approved, what's in construction as we speak, and again, what, what the board has already permitted through different developments. Most of the developments that Mr. Jean Pietro spoke about earlier today, they have been given permission, they've come in and they've filled out a water and sewer, sewer extension, and the board has approved those, those two larger developments, one being the Ridge Street Farm Estate and the, um, Treska Brothers on Route one oh nine, that, both of those have been approved by the board. The, the only ones that are still out there is the one, one fourteen Union Street, the forty B project, but in our calculations, there is enough to handle that and the other forty B calculation for the, um, the other forty B on Main Street. And there's another development further up on Main Street that he has filed a permit, but you've held, held off on that for that approval until this discussion has been taken care of.
So what you anticipate coming before with the Charles River Pollution District experts, you expect them to come here to explain what? Is, would it be somewhat redundant to what we've already heard, except that it's official?
It, it would be official, I think Town Council wants to actually hear it from them, you know, specifically, you know, the, the calculations, the one-ten per bedroom. They, they're gonna reaffirm that, they will reaffirm the, the seat on, at, at the, at the table that the, the town has, that we don't have, that we're a customer, we're not an owner at, at the Charles River Pollution District, the, the, it is owned by Franklin in the town of Medway, and Millis was taken on as a customer.
Anybody have any other comments or questions?
Not at this time, I do have some comments.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll, we will, when they come, I think it's important not only for them to come and answer, but to hear from us.
Right.
I mean, maybe we're just a customer, but we're a pretty big customer, um, and sometimes in the world, customers' voice actually gets heard, we'll see. The only thing I would like to ask, either from the DPW director or the finance director, if somebody can give me an estimate of what we've spent on capacity that we have been using, what's our annual cost of holding on to that, reserving that capacity?
I, we have that, that, that's part of that, part of that O and M cost that I presented to you yes, Saturday.
Yes, I know, but I would like to sort of call it out separately, that's all.
We can have, we'll have that at the.
I mean, you know, we, we've spent a lot of money on this excess capacity, we, meaning the ratepayers of the sewer, the sewer system.
Clark.
If I may, I'd also be interested in, when the facility was built in Franklin.
It's in Medway.
I mean, in Medway, was there any state money used?
That I don't, yeah.
Facility, if so, I'd like to know where they got the money, how much, what percentage of the project was built that way. And to that extent, I'd also like to know if you've been looking at what might be done with respect to other communities in the area that we might do some work with in that regard.
We have, we've done both of that, and I will have, ask that question through Town Council, I mean, I can answer that, that question, but we'll let, we'll, we'll let them answer that.
I think it would also be appropriate to, I know you did this before, but maybe to reach out to some of the, the key developer stakeholders who.
They all, they all reached out today, and I told them that's why they're not here.
Okay, all right.
That there wasn't gonna be that much of a discussion.
They'll be here.
They're all here.
Yeah.
They'll all be here.
No, I mean, that's important. Um, any other questions or comments for Mr. McKay?
No, all I would say is reiterate what, what Jim said about the, the folks that have an interest in this, we've been keeping in the loop, and I'm sure we'll have a spirited discussion Thursday about where we are and, and, you know, what the thoughts are about moving forward and, and preparation for them coming before the board at a, at a future meeting.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna invite, uh, three of the four members of the town website and communication committee to come forward. I serve as a liaison, and Peter Germain serves as our IT consultant, so we have, I guess technically, ex officio capacities. And Matt Irolano appears not to be here, so while they're setting up for a slide presentation, this is part one, the majority part of a two-part conversation in which the select board wants to say to the, to the community that one of our goals for fiscal twenty, which is the year that we're in, has been to identify ways to be more effective in the way that we are communicating with our community in order to inform them and engage them and empower them. And one of them certainly has been the website, the website was a challenge from the standpoint of normally, and this is what the three people at the table in different respects do for, and have done for a living, usually when you go out to get a consultant, it's really your choice, and then you, you go out and you identify experts to provide the service. And in this particular case, a somewhat rare and unique set of circumstances, we had to kind of roll with the, the company that we had. They are in fact the majority provider of municipal websites across Massachusetts. In the course of last year, they were bought by a national company, so there was a big change. They also have been retooling their operating system, so this is the roundabout way of saying that the website committee has been put on a roller coaster, not of its own doing, but of the vendor. And they've been doing a pretty masterful and energetic job of keeping pace, and so what you're about to be introduced to on a formal basis as a springboard for a broader conversation, which is integration of more town outbound social media, is a, a brief introduction to some of the highlights of what is currently millis.org. And the conversation will be, when it goes up, it will be led by Kurt Blumenau, who is wearing the green hoodie, closest to the podium. Kurt is a corporate communications, senior corporate communications executive at Eversource and a former journalist. He brings a lot of directly relevant experience to the table. Residents may recognize Linda Stetson in the middle, she is a former and much respected former director of the Millis Public Library, but more recently, prior to her retirement, she was the chief librarian at the Natick Public Library, which is not called that, so I apologize.
Morse Institute.
The Morse Institute. And then, uh, holding the computer is technology vunderkind extraordinaire Eli Jacobson, who also has served on the capital planning committee, the gentleman. Town meeting committee, I apologize. The gentlemen are relatively new to the town, which really makes their participation even that much more appreciated because they're new energy and they bring a lot of fresh ideas. Currently, Eli plays an important web development and content role at Brandeis University, so again, very strong credentials. Matt Irolano, who is not here, currently works for a web video developer, and prior to that was, spent sixteen years at Berklee College of Music, also doing web content. So what they wanna do is bring the town up to speed as to what you can find on the website, our commitment as a board to support the website in its evolution going forward. There were elements of our website that we wanted to be able to show today, but we got caught up in our vendor's latest round of operational and platform enhancements that have put our requests on hold until they get through that. But it looks like we're getting loaded up, are you guys feeling? So I'm gonna turn over the floor, and thank you all very much, because this group runs really efficiently and is the, the model of industry, I would have to say.
Well, thank you, appreciate the introduction.
If you just bring the mic over, then everybody can hear.
And you're Kurt, right?
I am Kurt, yes, I'm the chairman, and it's good to be here, thank you for having us all in. And again, we're one of the newer committees, I believe, in town, and as Loring indicated, our, our goal, our mission is to kind of make sure the website is as effective a tool as possible for communicating with residents, for communicating with prospective residents, prospective business owners, really the various different audiences that could be out there. And again, although I'm relatively new in town, my perception is that we weren't, is that the town wasn't, I guess you could say, didn't have one person who was driving it forward or looking at it strategically, is my understanding. And, and so I think that's part of the role of the committee, to look at it, see what it can be, push it forward, and identify possibilities for it. And Loring has mentioned, and I know most of you, in fact, are already aware of some of the issues we had with the vendor. Over the summer, they were transitioning to a new platform, new technology platform for their websites, and this was to happen at the end of last year, and they moved it up to late July or early August with not a heck of a lot of warning. And we had to basically retrain everybody in Town Hall who posts information to the website during summer vacation season with not a lot of, not a very much of a window of time. And as it happened, one of our first tasks as a committee in that situation was to sort of reevaluate our relationship with the vendor. I believe we are currently in a three-year contract with them. And we did a, we did research, we spoke with other towns, again, this company serves, what did you say, what did you say, Eli? A hundred and fifty towns in Massachusetts, more?
Eli looked it all up.
We don't need the exact number, but that's.
I looked at about a hundred and forty towns in Massachusetts, H through whatever.
H, I think.
And two, three out of four of those towns were used.
Yeah, we contacted some other communities, they had not had any issues. Again, we know that Civic Plus is a well-established vendor, serving lots of communities. And we also recognized that transitioning to a new site that we controlled would be, you know, a significant investment of. significant investment of, of time and, and effort, we felt. And so we, we've recommended that at least for now, we stick with the current vendor.
They're also the provider of all of the bordering towns of Milis, except for Franklin.
Franklin, yeah. So we, so again, we've, we've...
Could I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, sure.
On the contract?
Yeah.
Is it a multi-year contract? What's the...
I believe it was a three-year, it was a...
Three-year renewal each year, I think.
Yeah, my recollection is three-year and it's renewed, it's up every, well, not up, but every March.
Right. So we have the option, we have the option to withdraw on an annual basis.
Well, the legal option. And how much is it?
It's like $3,200 a year, I think, for hosting. The, the objection that we had, and I believe, I don't want to speak for you, but I'll say for myself, is that it's not an open source platform, something, in other words, software that anybody could use and, and carry with them. They operate on a back-engine platform that is proprietary, which means that if we were to move, we don't get to take this with us. So...
Yeah, I don't mean to, I'm going to ask questions because I want to know.
Yeah.
I mean, without you guys, you folks, I don't know where we would be. We could be at sea when they dump us. I mean, that was pretty, I mean, their story is going to be, we've been telling you this for five years, that we were going to shut this down. And then the last thing they told us, we're going to shut it down and, well, migrate to the new, whatever it is. But anyway, I don't...
I don't want to take credit away from the group, but I don't think we'd be as far out to sea as you think we'd be.
So there's still be, we'd still be tied to the dock, but we'd be bailing, we'd be bailing. Okay, fine. All right, thank you.
So anyway, I mean, that, that more or less completes my opening remarks. I was going to throw it over to Eli now and play some more microphone chess.
Sure.
And he's, he's going to talk a bit about the current website and where we're going, and then Linda's going to talk about kind of where the committee is headed in the year to come, what sort of things we want to tackle. So, Eli?
Sure. So, right, the old website, as of, I don't know, fall of last year, you saw, was on legacy, was hosted on legacy servers that, which is the reason that they had to move us over. Based on my research also, we were the only town that had that. Every single town that I've looked at had been moved over to the new template on Civic Plus. So, and I looked at over 100 towns. So when they moved us over, it just kind of came to a bar that they couldn't be hosting us on this legacy platform anymore, and had kind of fallen into disrepair. So they took the initiative to basically just plop us into this new site, because we didn't have a committee in place at the time to give them any direction to design the template. So this was just kind of a bagged, here you go. They took all of our content, so all of the content that was on the old site, and functionality, for the most part, was just kind of put into this new server platform, hosting platform, that has this new sort of modern look. And it's not terrible, I like it better than the old one, but obviously it's, we, it, there's a lot more that we could, should, and will do with it. But this is just what they gave us without any input from us. But we have the option with our existing contract, with what we've already paid them, to do some basic customization of the template. It's not only customization because they've got sort of three different options of sort of templates that you can choose from, from a couple of different towns, and if you don't like those, you can do further customization for further costs. But we went and looked at the, as a, as a committee, we looked at the main options that they provided and chose a town. It happened to be the town of Tiringham, their template, similar to that. And I'm happy to show that to you. But anyway, we have been working with them to put together a new template. And we wish that it was ready to go by tonight, but it was kind of a little bit ill-timed due to some other work that they've been tasked with, with infrastructure, that they couldn't get to it in time for tonight. So I do have an example of what that will look like. So this is the template that we've chosen. This is just a mock-up, so this is not functional yet, but this is an example.
The spider web scared me the first time I saw it.
So, right. The, right, the background image is customizable. That was just a Milis picture that they had chosen at random. But what we liked the most, and the reason that we chose this template, is just to get all of the most important information onto the front page. You know, pictures are great and important. We want to show a lot of pictures, but I think the reason people come to the Milis website is, the reason I come to the Milis website is to get information. So if everything that I can find is right here, that's great. I actually liked, I was looking at all of our neighboring towns' websites to see which one I liked best, and I sort of, Medfield has a really great website. And part of the reason is because everything is right here on this front page. So, you know, buttons to all of our main functions, news, these are little tabs to get you to the calendar, and then this Find It Fast button up here is going to be a big drop, big sort of expansion that gets you to all of the rest of the services that you're probably looking for. So once we get this site, this new template deployed, I think that's the first step to then working with, you know, content optimization and all of that.
Let's segue into Linda to talk about what's next thematically.
What we're working towards in, in the next year is, we do want to develop policies and processes for how to post news items on the website, some kind of a style sheet on how we want that to happen. And...
Also, who gets to do it?
Well, that's right, someone has to get to do it.
That's important, too. So who's going to fill up all that, all that space taken by the...
These, these things you're bringing up now are very important to me. Not that I don't like this, but it's really important to make this, you know, a usable, useful communications device, because you guys know better than I do, all you need to do is deliver some erroneous information or something that's not right, and no one's going to come back.
Right. And so that we, we have policies that should be followed when you're posting something. And we had been talking with Loring about a style sheet, making sure that we're using the, the right fonts and, and structure. And then we're also working with photographers to get some photos up here, and looking at how we can credit them and get permission to use the photos. And we have been talking about, there are some folks in town with drones who've taken some really cool photos, and talking about using some of those photos of Milis.
Because really showing the, you know, it, obviously, the information and news is one thing, but we also want to show off the...
The town.
Pictureactive views of the town.
Right.
People, you know, people doing interesting things, what have you, so, so that the visual...
Who's going to decide that?
Like what pictures are used, or...
Yeah.
Good question.
I would think that would be us.
The committee?
Yeah.
Well, I think you have to propose that as a governance structure. If that's what you want to do, then let us know, because we are the ones who are responsible for this, just like you are. The only reason I'm bringing this up is this is just one of the committees, and the chair and my colleague know even better than I do, of people who are, given the fact that we have no resources to offer, are taking it on their own shoulders. This wouldn't happen without your willingness to do this, just like the Communications Committee, the IT Committee. We wouldn't have gotten to the system that we now have at Town Hall in terms of support for the phones and whatnot if it hadn't been for them. And it's not like I'm trying to give people credit, that's, because I'm not, I'm sure you're not doing this for the credit, but the town needs to understand, not only the commitment you've made, but the ongoing role that you play in making this a successful destination for our citizens. Until such time as we hire four communications people on town payroll, which will not happen in your lifetime. So I, I guess I'm particularly interested over time in learning from the committee what role you see yourselves playing. And at some point, volunteerism is great, but what resources you need to make your job success, more successful.
And, well, I forgot to mention this, too, in working with photographers and finding the best way to give them credit, is also to develop a form or a process to get permission to publish photos that might have people in them, especially children.
Yeah, well, this is the town's website, so we have obligations to follow whatever rules we've got to follow. I mean, the rule against spider webs, but I don't know, it's rule four six down.
It was better than that pickup truck heading out of town.
That was pretty funny.
That was bad.
I should also mention that Linda focused on her library directorship background, but Linda was on the front, the front line of bringing library sciences into the technology era. So she, this is a journey that she's also traveled professionally.
And it's important for us to get some public input, too. We don't want to be this committee of three or four that's come up with this...
I did look for your minutes, by the way.
What's that?
The minutes of your committee meetings. Couldn't find them.
Oh.
We have them.
Online or hard copy?
No.
Oh, one here.
Okay.
Minutes.
I hate to be the open-meeting-law guy, as Eli knows.
No, we definitely have them.
Nobody asked me.
Who is your clerk or secretary?
Can I ask a question, actually? First of all, I would say thank you very much. You guys have been great, and, and I know Loring pushed this through. But our website was very outdated, and we're very well aware of that. But as you know, like Jim said, we wear a lot of hats here in every office, and so our time is, we don't have a lot of time to devote to being able to research these kind of things, so it's very much appreciated. And I guess my question is, are you, is the committee looking to train kind of each department or do something, or do, like you said, have something where each department will have somebody who's responsible for uploading the information from the department or the Board or Committee, or, because some of the issues we have in-house right now is that, for example, loading the minutes. Each board secretary, and lots of times, these are volunteers, these aren't paid secretaries to these boards and committees, have to have the ability to load their minutes online and their agendas and that type of thing. So that's where we're kind of struggling right now. There is no one person to do that. I know we're looking to get an IT person on board, sooner than later, a, a paid IT person. I looked to Pete. And so maybe that's something they're going to, to take over, but I guess that's my concern, as Mike and I, I guess Jim was saying earlier, is that I hate to see it, this beautiful website with completely outdated information. And I, for one, I tend to do the homepage, but it really is like, let's get something on there, dribs and jabs. I never have the time to actually put something. So I guess when it's, when you're thinking about how to run it, I'm just not sure who's going to be responsible for putting a lot of that on.
What I'm getting at, though, to some degree, too, is an operating model.
Right.
What is ideally, I mean, you guys, you folks are the experts. We've seen very effective communications going on in other cities and towns. We've also learned a little bit about how they manage that. So, not that we're all going to necessarily get there the first day, but at some point, we need to understand as a community what we need to do to make this really successful, leveraging the volunteers. And look, the fact of the matter is, we're going to ask you to volunteer as long as you possibly can.
Well, my hope is that the culture sort of changes a little bit, and that the website becomes sort of a central communication tool for the town, and that that's where people go to for the information, and that becomes sort of a priority for where the information gets posted. That's how I actually got interested in joining the committee, was because I was interested in getting out the word about the town and meetings.
Agreed.
And so our old website, this website has it, too, it turns out, like the e-subscribe function, which I was trying to understand on the old website, if it was still working or what, what the deal, it, it does work. There's 800 people subscribed, and we can get lots more. And it turns out, it's actually quite easy to make any news announcement into an email to everybody that subscribes. It's only a few clicks. This is built on a content management system, so I know, like, there have been some concerns about, like, proprietarianess, is that a word?
I don't want to smell it.
The, the advantage of that, in our case, is that it's based on templates that are sort of constrained in that anybody can sort of add content, but the templates of, you know, fonts and formats and all those things, you're having a news item, but there's not a whole lot any average user can do to screw it up.
Yeah, that's who we're looking for, I think.
That's a good thing, I think, for users, that makes it relatively easy to train people, I hope, is that we're just giving them access to it, and then they can add these items in, and they're just clicking buttons, and they can't really break in.
Can you teach me word first before I get into it?
I will say, I will say, as far as putting things on the website, uploading, this is a much more user-friendly.
Agreed.
You still have to get used to it a little bit. The old one was really antiquated and took, took a little bit of a degree to figure out how to put some stuff on there, but...
And that's why I think it was important also to get the template in place first, because we don't, people don't like big changes once they're getting trained. And so I wanted to get, I think it was important to sort of, this is how it's going to mostly look for now. There's not going to be major changes to this, at least for a little while, until people get used to how they edit their website, and then once that's there in place, we can, okay, this is how it's going to look, here are the buttons, and we can get people sort of going.
Yeah.
And what you were saying, too, Karen, is when I came here 15 years ago as a library director and tried to post on that website...
So you felt my pain.
Oh, it was awful.
It's so time-consuming, it was just foolish.
I think the reality is that nowadays, I mean, we're just so accustomed to electronic, you know, communication, sending an email is not a big deal. And what's happened is that the whole interaction one has with a website has been made foolproof and user-friendly. So what we hope is that it will be much more reflexive, instead of just having, for example, if all public meetings ultimately get posted through the town clerk's office, it won't just be the paper version that shows up on a wall, it will now automatically go onto a calendar. And there are, and this will dovetail, I think, somewhat with social media operations, that, that there will just be, you know, it won't be about how do we, you know, suppress communication, but how do we really encourage it and make this a very robust, fill it out. I mean, you're, what you're looking at are kind of the ribs, and what we can do is really fill it out and make it fat with content. So we have a lot of capacity for that. We have the ability to change photos seasonally. We have made some outreach to local photographers who are interested in supporting this effort, and they're professionals. We've seen them at town events, which is great. And we may even get into video at some point, but right now, what we just want to do is kind of train people instinctively, oh, I've got a meeting and agenda, that means a couple of different things. And what's added is, I'm going to this website, or I'm bringing, I'm sending a document to the person that, that you all determine inside of Town Hall. I mean, I think realistically, the people who have to produce the content are the people within this building. And where the committee can be helpful are things like perhaps opinions or ideas for a calendar of news ideas, that then is kind of provided as some thought starters. But the reality is, the people who are inside this organization are the people who will be using this as a tool, and the committee will be more advisory, perhaps some design finesse, perhaps some new bells and whistles that will come online. The, the vendor is working on new things. We don't have the full range of what those capabilities will be. But I think there's a big demand and excitement for this. And one thing we don't know, but I know Peter has this, is right now, it's milis.org. At some point, is it going to be milisma.gov to fulfill the .gov convention?
We're going to update the DNS pointers for that fairly quickly, but I won't do it without talking with you first.
Well, we should do it after we get to the new website, probably.
Well, I'm not so worried about that. What I, the only other thing I'm concerned with is that you're comfortable with the way in which you're interfacing with Civic Plus. It bothers me not who you're using...
Right.
Or how you're developing it. Common platforms are great, but if the vendor is somebody you can work with, that's fine. If they're not, if you're fighting with them on a regular basis, we need to understand that.
I, I don't think we're, we're fighting with them. It's unfortunate that the website wasn't able to come up in time for this meeting right now. I also feel that, I think there was, there was probably some bad communication that happened last year with that turnover, and I wasn't totally involved in that whole process. But I, I wish that our committee had started then, and we had had the time to design that template in, you know, a timely manner back then. But I have to put some of the onus on our own town for letting our website fall into that state, because we are the only one that had that. I went to all these websites, and we were the last one. So I do actually believe them, that they had to shut off the server. And we let our website get into a terrible state. So, like, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I do put some of the onus on us with that frustration.
My concern isn't past, it's going forward.
Yeah.
If you're finding they're easy to work with, and that they're responsive, excellent. I just want to make sure that that's the way you find it. And if not, we make other moves. But if this is comfortable, if this is something that makes sense to you, more power to you.
There are absolutely other choices out there.
Absolutely. But the key is, you're the committee.
Yeah.
I'm just saying... I'm just saying, as long as you're comfortable that this is a good responsive group to work with, excellent.
And I think, sorry, Madam Chair, I think it is very important that we train the people who are putting the information on in the departments. I think they sometimes feel like they're just getting thrown things and they're not sure what they're doing and they're busy with the rest of the things they're doing. If they realize this is, like, like you said, Lorian, just another step to posting, then it's another step to posting and you put it on and you make it easy. And I think that's where everyone's struggling right now. But again, if we don't train the people to put it on properly, the information isn't correct, the whole thing is a failure. So I think that's really important to realize that, as I said, we, we don't have the staff necessarily to just devote the time that we'd like to, to put the website on.
Sure.
I have called Civic Plus, Civic Plus, quite a few times recently. If I get stuck trying to post something and it's not working, I just call them.
How is that?
And they've been great. And they were great before when they're, the old platform, they were very good about just you just call them up and they help you out. They are looking, though, and I said, I'm calling you a lot and I apologize, and he said, the only thing is, we're, we're hoping you're eventually just going to become self-sufficient and do all of this. So again, that speaks to needing somebody who kind of can manage it and do it. But they certainly were friendly enough, I mean, they always helped, they get right on, they takes no time to fix things.
We did do some due diligence. I contacted all of our surrounding towns that use Civic Plus and asked them about their experiences with Civic Plus.
Yeah.
And I got positive feedback from all of them. And it was five or six towns, but.
We'll have to be further touching, we'll, you know, we'll work on this.
So we'll figure out, yeah, so whatever.
And if they have to come back, I mean, they've provided training to us once before. The problem was it happened, it was like drinking from a fire hose. The problem was it was, you know, it was learning how to fly the plane while the plane was airborne.
And again, the only, the only complaint we had with Civic Plus was we were originally told that we would have to do the switch over in December and then on very short notice we were told it was going to be, happen in August. That was the only complaint we had. I mean, since then, it, the experience has been good on our end. So it was just an issue that came.
We'll, we'll see how it goes going forward.
I'm very pleased with what I'm hearing. I just don't want you to feel that, oh, we've run into a problem and I don't really want to bring it up or we're trying to compromise. If you're comfortable, you're the committee, I think it's terrific.
Well, I just want to add, though, I mean, at this point, I'm as interested in hearing from you what you expect from this board. We're the policymakers here. We need advice on what the policy should be and we need to be able to support you and we, if in fact the decision is that we will train all the employees on Thursday, I mean, just making up something, that's our responsibility to direct the administration to do it. At the same time, we have to tell them what we, what they used to be doing on Thursday, they're not going to do anymore because we can't just keep piling stuff on. But it's really important, I think, as we move into this, you have a strong concept and in any organization which you work, the, the site has a purpose, a reason, it's trying to accomplish something. And where I'm asking, I'm helping to, I'm hoping to get some information over time where you, and it was in your write-up, where you started talking about what is next on your horizon, that I asked the chair to particularly tonight to come in and talk to us about that because I'm trying to learn and I'm, you know, we're supposed to set the direction on the policy, can't do it without your input. And I want to make sure that we're supportive without just frankly dumping everything on you, which is what we did with the communicator, the phone committee, I mean, whatever, I'm sorry. That's what I really want. I mean, I want to understand how you, how we can be supportive in helping you to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish and helping us to really understand clearly what the direction is. One last question I have for you before apparently we're going to something else. Which is, which is, forgive me if I'm going to get this wrong, it's like user input. How do we, I forget what it's called, when you're, if you're creating a website, there's user training, but there's also user feedback, not just, we have it here, we're going to train you how to use it. We have something we're thinking of doing, how would this help you do what you're going to do, what you have to do? So there's testing of, of the, I know it's not this website because we're kind of stuck with it, but I'm trying to get at, how are we getting input from the person who's going to use it as well as the person who's receiving the information?
Are you talking about like end users, like community, like the community, how they're?
The intermediate user, which is the department. The department has, what it's trying to do is tell people, you know, that we're going to close Village Street for three days for a water main. So they need to know that this is what they're going to do, this is how they're going to do it. They feel this is the most effective way to actually communicate that, based upon their years of experience of getting feedback from neighbors and whatnot. And then at the end of the day, they can't speak in acronym language. You know, the OTC and the FYC is going to be done on Friday. No one will know what it is. That's the end user. So that's kind of what, I'm hoping that we get some thoughts from you folks, too, as to that, those, that kind of testing. Now, if it's take it or leave it, you know, testing, I guess we're not going to do. Well, I'll give you a ridiculous example, okay? Let's assume that the users at Millis, after they use this thing, say, the last thing I want to see is photographs of Millis. I'd rather see the Grand Canyon. Well, they're, they're the end user and how do we, how do we get that feedback from them, other than they stop going to the website because we don't, they don't want to see Millis, they want to see the Grand Canyon?
We should have, and I don't know if we have it now, a, I mean, I know Pete set us up with a, you are, a email address and a website at Millis.
Yep, yep.
So that, I don't know if that, where that is on the site, but that should be one fairly visible, contact us.
Yeah.
And I think it goes, it's set up to go to the three of our emails, so we get it. So that would be one.
Exactly how it's set up. So all you have to do is give them the opportunity, make your comments, give us your feedback, have you got any suggestions? These are pretty typical in most of these website setups, anyway.
Yeah, well, you're going to get the people who you're going to get. What I want is the person who looked at it and never came back, I guess. I don't know. I'm way ahead of you.
Well, the first thing that comes to mind to me, of course, is having a meeting at the public library in the evening and, and inviting the people who would not normally show up and try to get some feedback.
Oh, yeah, I think that's good. I think we should go to the senior center and have a session.
Spend a lot of time down there, too.
I know, that's why, say, okay, this is what we're doing. Well, how excited are you? Well, we're not excited. Okay, fine. But some will be.
Wasn't there a survey?
And it is a mistake for people to conclude that people who are in their 70s don't go to these things.
And I think that's really important is, is to include.
I know that because I'm in the 70s, but I, I can go to a website and look it up and try to find stuff. Okay, sorry.
Wasn't there a survey at, at some point? Didn't we do a survey in the beginning? Am I forgetting?
I think we sent something out to, I believe, department heads.
Oh, maybe. Maybe it's worth doing again, some sort of survey that we could also.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there definitely should be more than that, I know Linda mentioned, we want to reach out and get public.
Yeah, but the training is not just training. We want to engage these people in this is a new way to do business.
And I think when.
To your point, not just hammer them with it.
Yeah.
But to say, all right, this is how we're going to move and by 20, by Friday, we're going to be there, whatever the date is.
Friday, great.
And I think what people will find is that the menu of all the different departments and committees that are on here, they're going to start to see content that's of interest to them and that's what's going to. So they're not going to want to go through everything, but somebody who's interested in the council on aging is going to go.
I'm sure that if somebody's interested in conservation, they're not going to go look at, you know, the cable TV committee, they're going to go to conservation.
But that's why the search is so important.
You've got in the new functionality, among the other things.
My immediate concern is partly what my comrade here says, but the other part of it is, the people who are going to use it initially are not going to sit back and say, I don't like it and I'm not going to comment on it. We know we're going to get the feedback. And the key from that perspective is to be responsive. So let's see how it goes. I think you've got a few things on your plate. I've got a few notes here that I'll probably share with you in the not-too-distant future.
We also have a lot of backend tools that our vendor is going to provide for us, so we will have data on what search terms are being used. We have the benefit of the scale of, they've already rolled out X number of websites, so we actually said to them, give us the search terms that have been proven to be the highest demand in other communities, because we're not going to have a, you know, markedly different list. So we wanted to make sure that we were starting in a, in a positive and advantageous position from a, from a search standpoint. And we will be able to look at, to your point, Jim, everybody who manages, I'm looking at two of you at least, that have input into website content, know that you're always looking at backend numbers, what, how many people got there, how did they get there, did they do a Google search, did they go directly to a page, whether or not they spent time in the right place or the wrong place, they dropped off, why, and then we can figure out from there. So there is a lot of data that we can extrapolate.
I'm not worried about data. I'm not worried about capability. I'm not worried. I mean, I, I want us to be able to make as effective use as we can and we have to evaluate organizational readiness to do it. And I don't think, while I'm sure there's going to be some resistance, but I don't think people resist.
No.
Most people, I, even, you know, at Town Hall and elsewhere, knew that that old site was just clunking along and each, you know, each week or month, the, its effectiveness, not that it was changing, it was just less and less effective. So, and I do think it's unfortunate that we were forced into a, an early rollout without being ready because you, I know you wouldn't have told us to do it that way.
No.
You would have said, do it this way. But again, thank you very much for all the help you've given and this is an important initiative for us, I think, as a town.
So this is a part two and I'm just going to hold the committee over because there will be some integration with the website. So we have talked as a group for a long time now and we put a stake in the ground with respect to updating and upgrading our capacity to handle outbound social channel content as well. And the website will be, in fact, the anchor for that. So that, which is very standard. Anybody who has an organizational website usually at the very top is going to find some hyperlinks, Jim, that have, that send you to the different primary social sites. So we just wanted to set the table for a conversation that then the town administrator is going to pick up to be responsive to part of the question, which was, how is the website going to operate and how will the relationship of social media go from there? So this was the town goal for those in the audience or watching at home, that the select board adopted, that we were going to work on communication. And so there were two committees that have something to say about that. One is this one, so Matt's not here, Kurt's our chair. And then the other is that we have a new economic development committee, of course, Bob Weiss, who just went out, so we never got to see his name in lights. But Jim Sabitis is the chair and we have a really good group that represents a variety of perspectives within the town. And certainly, social media is really important for economic development outreach and to professionalize it. So the proposal to the select board vis-à-vis the town administrator is to create a simple official town policy that will be anchored by the website. And those, in fact, are the very standard, that's the very standard menu of social media channels. They have different complementary functions, there's nothing that's a surprise to anybody who's in communication. And in fact, there's not even really a surprise in Millis because Millis is very active. So it's pretty obvious that departments felt that along the passage of time, that they in fact needed to be where their constituencies were with respect to social media. So all of these groups, in fact, operate some complement of either web, web-based, web pages and/or social, social channels. And they do so without any sort of encumbrance or guidance of an official policy. So a policy would somewhat just make sure that it recognizes the success that they've had, nobody's gone off to jail that we are aware of for anything that they've posted. And these groups have all just quietly hummed along and, and used social media effectively. So they're complementary, but they're different. So Facebook is the one that you hear about the most. And I think the recommendation from a policy perspective that you've heard in the conversations that we've had is to turn off comments. And the website would provide a vehicle for people to be asking things through, through email. It doesn't change our ability to be responsive, but I think people know that the potential for, you know, a pile-on of, of comments is not what you want. What you want to do is simply to be able to dispatch information from the town very clearly and concisely and direct people, again, to the website. So a really good example would be that we have a very important public meeting that the town was, is probably going to be interested in because it's about a project that's going to be very prominent in the town. It's opposite the, it's 109 eastbound, opposite the Exchange Street intersection. And so an example here would be to simply post that. So this is the town of Norfolk. And these are recent screenshots that show you how different towns use this. So there, it's one-way communication, they've posted something that indicates where people can get information and then there's a link that brings, that somebody can then click. So this is, we've heard about this. This is the Millis Police Department. They've made it clear, and we would recommend doing this for the various social pages, exactly what the user experience is. So it makes it very clear that there is a policy with respect to commentary and decorum and how this will in fact be used or not used as a place where people make comments. And you can see on the Millis Police Department page, they allow comments. So, just so you know. So this is an example, also recent, of Medway. They use their Facebook page to talk about a road that was closed. They're, so really short, sweet, to the point, if people want to know what's going on, they, they know, I'm going to go to this place and I'm going to get some information. So this was an example of how we handle the same scenario, which is not posting it to a town Facebook page. Being called, it was, this happened to be on a Saturday, it was, it, it's not that it couldn't be done, but it's not the way we want to do it. If we just had our own page and somebody within this organization didn't have, it took more time to call to get it done than it would have been to just jump online and, and make the post. So LinkedIn is really a business channel that we really want to cultivate from an economic development standpoint. There's a lot of ways in which we can show that the Millis economy is vital, that it's growing, that we can be communicating business-type content, we can use it to support position recruitment, we can talk about if we end up adding, for example, tax incentive programs, we can talk about that. There's a lot of communities that use this very effectively. So now here's how I would, the banner overhead, anybody in marketing knows that that blue banner is kind of the kiss of death and we would not have that, we would have something that communicated visually, something about business. But the reason that I put this here, it's a little hard to read because of the, of the scale, but it describes the town. It tells the story of the town from a business, from a business perspective. This is another platform and it's another way in which people could find out about jobs, but we would be posting them directly to, to our page. Instagram, you've probably heard of, this is a very visual, it's really very short, short, short comments, it's all about a photo or a very short video. So this is much more of a lifestyle outlet. We have departments such as the Department of Rec, certainly the schools, the, the Council on Aging. So anything that we have, Beautification Day, so the Garden Club, so anything that just shows slice of life in Millis, this is a really nice way to complement the other social channels and it provides more outlets for telling the story if you were considering moving here as, at whatever age you were doing that. And you could see all the different aspects of life, whether it's sports or beautification, outside scenes, whatever it is, Instagram is a way to do it. It's a very familiar thing, as you can see, the town of Medway has 1,400 posts, but they also, they, they've done, you know, something that was an alert. So they had a construction notification by, by Kurt's employer. So there's a lot that can be done, the, the shot that got cut off on the bottom right was in fact a profile, an employee spotlight. So we could use that for a business spotlight, for example. Twitter is really news-driven, but again, could be used to, to again, reach out about upcoming meetings where you want to get more people to attend, news events, recognition, anything about legislators, they would love it if we did that. So here's an example of that same highway sign put in another, in another channel, the Twitter by the town of Medway. You saw the previous one on Facebook. Not everybody on Facebook is on Twitter, not everybody on Twitter is on Facebook, different people have, and, and businesses and vendors and prospective employees all have their own personal convention. And then to the extent that we can, you know, collaborate effectively with Millis Community Media, they're broadcasting us tonight. As you know, Jim, because you're on the, you're the liaison to their board, the town, and just the town, I want to say this so the town understands because we took kind of a hit over the weekend. because we took kind of a hit over the weekend. The town doesn't own Millis Community Media. Millis Community Media is run independently. It's funded through Verizon and Comcast by virtue of FCC, Federal Communications Commission licensing requirements. So we don't have control. So when people send me nasty notes, or call me and complain that we don't have video up, this is a relationship that we look to as a partner. And we are going to, in fact, they had a board meeting tonight, so we're going to get more information from them about what works and what doesn't, and that we can kind of figure out if there are holes in this. We have an award-winning video department in our schools. But I think we are working on, Karen did yeoman's work, as you know, over the weekend for the budget hearings. So Millis Community Media is now on YouTube. So to the extent that we do have public event content or meeting content, it's another place where people who are very aligned to that would be able to easily watch some of that content. And I just want to close out by saying that the Economic Development Committee had the great fortune to have Peter Milano come out. He's a really respected veteran of state government and is involved in policy and marketing with respect to, with respect to business growth, and he has a lot of credits we can point to that have been in the news that he's had his fingers on. And as he said, "I now consider myself fully introduced to Millis." But this was his quote. I confirmed my ability to use it. So it reads, "Smart governments know the power of social media and use it effectively to compete for and retain business." So from an economic development standpoint, we are hoping that we can say to the town administrator, because there's so much content and guidance out there with respect to public meeting policy, that what we don't want to do is strangle creativity. We want to kind of open the channels, and it's evident that we have a lot of departments that are already doing this. And where the website committee would come in is in providing the links to the different channels. So that's the roundup of social media for the town. You consider, consider yourself overwhelmed or informed?
Not overwhelmed. Go back a slide, please.
Go back a slide.
It's the "And use it effectively" part that I am interested in learning more about. That's really the key.
Mm-hmm.
There's lots I could do, if I had the resources to do it. And I think that if we looked at a number of these towns, we would find that they have, as part of their operating model, somebody who does it. It's a communications director. It's an outreach director. There are towns that, in their charter, have a required position, which is community outreach leader, which is a whole, it takes, and anybody who's in community outreach today in 2021, we're not there yet. We're only in 2020, is that right?
Yes.
I'm thinking about fiscal '21.
That was Saturday.
You think Mike, you think Mike, Jim Petro is confused about what year. So I'm as, I, I really want to understand that part of it. The "effectively use it," because if we don't use it effectively, then it's a lot of work for no particular purpose. And that, that, to me, is, it's not the ability to do it. It's not the fact that you can do it. It's how do you do it well? That's kind of what I want to do.
Madam Chair, if I may, certainly, I know we've had a lot of discussions about this. I think if the board so desires, I could put together at least a first draft proposal for the board at your next meeting in two weeks, that at least lays out a plan of how we might start incorporating some of these within the current staff levels of what is manageable, and then begin that process. I think, obviously, a lot of departments here have taken their own initiative in the-
That is not necessarily comforting to me, I have to say.
I know, I know, I know.
I'm not criticizing them. They took the bull by the horns.
But I think, I think their motivation was, was appropriate.
The motivation was exactly right. And frankly, taking an example, a rec department has an entirely different use, because they're, they're out there getting customers to come to them, as opposed to a Department of Public Works, which is more informational.
Right.
That's, that's too easy to-
Understood and agree.
That's, that's, that's exactly the, the point, really. So-
So I think we have to put together something that really fits, from a broad governmental standpoint, of how the government, the local government moves forward with this in a more, let's just say, centralized and not, not overly controlling, but, but, but one that kind of sets out the standards and puts forward the processes so that things can be done in an orderly fashion, and there's certain levels of accountability, whether that be at department head level, or how that's set up for the different types of mediums that have been discussed tonight for, for getting information to the public. So, and my main concern all along has been, has never, never been a question of whether social media has very, can have very positive impacts for communicating with the public. It absolutely does. It's more a matter of making sure it's done in a way that we minimize any, any possible negative impacts.
I would put it a different way, that we maximize the effectiveness.
Yes.
Let's be positive.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I, when I was on the board before, in a planet far, far away, in another decade, actually, it's another millennium, Millis had a weekly newspaper.
Yeah.
I used to work for one of those, not the Millis one. Yeah, I remember Weekly Newspaper.
Millis Press. And reflecting back on that period in the '90s, and frankly, gathering community support to spend $2 million to refurbish this building as the town hall and community center, it's a much different environment from newspaper point of view to come back to the board years later and find there's no, well, there is. I mean, there's a page or two. And I urge everybody to read Dave Pasquantino, I think that's his name.
Pasquantino.
Yes, Pasquantino's description of the taxes, because it was a very well-done article.
Well done.
Very well done. But without that, this is just the paper in a different format.
Right.
You know, so even though I've struggled with it a little bit, it's, it's clear to me that this is something that we've got to capture in a way that works. Now, I'm, I'm not willing to take no risk, because I don't think it's, I mean, we, but there are risks. I want to make, understand, I understand who they are. I want some of the controls to be right. I want it to meet all the requirements of open meeting law and hold on to the stuff and all the kind of stuff that we do. And we do have a couple of things that were presented to us from other towns, like the town of Plainville and the town of Franklin, about the guidelines that are used. And they, they, they're not particularly onerous, but there are guidelines, so that when we do this, that we do it, that we do it right. And part of the input is from the staff. Part of the input is from folks like you, who have thought about it, and our chair, a lot, outside of this town, and, and your guidance is, you know, invaluable here.
So I think that, you know, we can, this, I think this can be an iterative process.
Yeah.
You know, it comes along with sort of this overall changing of our culture to sort of improve communications with, in the town, to try to get the word out about things that are important to as many people as possible. And so there's sort of, I think there's a sort of simple, low-risk way to at least get started with it, which is, you know, I mean, the way I sort of would imagine starting would be things that we would post on our, front, the front page of our website. Because at the website, you have to actively go there in order to find anything.
Yep.
And people don't. But with these social media channels, these just show up in people's feeds as they're, you know, doing whatever. They, they, they are pushed to people much more than people actually going to them.
From a purely political science perspective, you're, what you're doing there is you are skewing the audience. And because what you're going to do is, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, and I'd like to understand from, I guess, from my perspective, I think if we had, whatever the number is, you know, 5,000, well, 2,000 people on Facebook who got pushed out information regularly from, from the town. And I agree with the chair. I mean, I think we should start with the outbound, because then we build confidence in it. We understand it better, and then maybe we can open up a bit. But I am also interested, from a communications point of view, what about the other 5,000 people who aren't on Facebook? How do I make sure that they get the same kind of information?
So, exactly. So these-
I knew that Eli would know the answer, which is why I asked the question.
Well, yeah. So these, my thought as for, as far, at least getting started, is that, you know, these things run in tandem with announcements that would, that are official, you know, town-
Yep.
-announcements, that, something that would go on the website and might also get pushed out through social media. So if you take something, for example, a, what Lauren posted, that she had posted on Facebook, which was about a road closure, something like that, it's not quite something that is worthy of the reverse 911. It's not an emergency, but it's an important town announcement. And so people have, through the website, there's this e-subscribe function, that anybody can go and subscribe to that. And we can then put out guidelines for what types of announcements are worthy of pushing out that newsletter to people through the e-news for announcements like that.
School closures.
Also, right, what?
School closures.
Road closures.
Well, we know that people are using it, yeah. I mean-
So, so, but for the people that aren't, so, but then, that's something that may also be worthy of going on just a, a Facebook post as well, for people that either didn't sign up for the e-news. Some people may get both. But the e-news is how people that don't use social media have the option of getting these-
Right.
-these invitations. So it kind of goes in both.
Well, I agree with that. I mean-
You would, you would post a news, you posted something to the news section of the website, send out a push to that, and maybe also post some, the same text in a post on Facebook.
Different tools get different people.
And dif, right, exactly. And we're, all we're doing is expanding the, the reach of who gets-
Well, that's exactly what I'm, I'm looking to understand.
Yeah.
Because I can't do it with a newspaper anymore.
Right. And you're not, and I know you're not a Facebook user, but you can get that exact same information through putting your email address in the e-subscribe.
Well, I'll tell you, the library sends me stuff every couple of days. Because when I was down there, I signed up for their e-serve, and I know their program.
And, and you can choose whether you-
Well, I actually have one of those, but my grand, I'm blaming my grandson.
And you can choose by category, too, in that e-subscribe. So I mean, you know, it kind of depends on what it is, what type of information you're looking for-
Right.
-through that. But-
And Jim, just to add, we do use the e-subscribe. I do use that-
I know.
-quite frequently when it's something. I'm assuming you're, you're on our e-subscribe as well.
Apparently not, because I-
You do?
Oh, see? So we, that's, yeah.
Do you use the e-subscribe?
I do.
We need to talk, because I've never got, I've signed up for it, and I've never got-
And you've never gotten anything?
I signed up for it, too, and I never got it.
That's good to know.
That's right.
I can't, we haven't done, I, we haven't done much recently, but if it's anything important, I put out, we have a job posting, other things. I'll put it out on the e-subscribe, so maybe we do need to look at that, Eli. Perhaps some of it's fallen off since the old website is gone. I'm not quite sure.
I see some of it is passive versus proactive access.
Sure.
Right.
But you're bringing up an important point, which is the e-subscribe, I'm not sure is getting out to everyone.
That would be good to know.
And should we call it an e-subscribe, or should we call it something else?
Yeah, whatever you want to call it.
And that's where we would look at the committee to make a recommendation to. It's semantics, but it's important.
No, it's a very important thing.
But the same as the library, the school puts out, you know, "I'm on for my kids' schools." You can subscribe just to the middle school, the elementary, high school. You know, "I'm only at the high school now," but you do get information that way. And quite honestly, that is how I get it, the information. I don't go searching for it. I just kind of wait until they tell me that it's something I need to pay attention to, for good or for bad. But, yeah.
I'd like to connect with you further and test that a little bit further and make sure that it's functioning as possible.
Let's do it. I'm, sure.
Well, let me just ask one more question, and then I'll stop hogging this. Could the committee consider, let, let's take an event, say, okay-
Town meeting.
Say, okay.
I joined the committee.
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
Okay, May 11th. What might be the recommendation, the thought process for your group, assuming you understand that we're looking for outbound, and we haven't formally voted that, but I think that's a consensus, to, to make the town meeting preparation for folks more effective, and presumably bring more people to attend? That, to me, is a way to get at it, because I want to, I want, I don't want to, my view is, I don't have Facebook because it is there. I have Facebook because I want to get something done, and that's a good way to do it. That's just my, that's my view.
Well, I want to bring a button to the front page of the website that gives you a easy access into all of the materials that you could possibly need for town meeting.
Right.
I've seen other towns' websites, and that's one thing I, I noticed immediately, was that that's, one of the core, for core reasons a lot of people might go to the website is to try to learn more about town meeting, where is it, when is it, and get the warrant. So I want to make that-
Well, then that leads us also to the issue of, okay, there's more ways to explain what's going on than just the warrant.
Well-
Or the budget document.
Yeah.
Or, so then what is the message from the governing body, for example, or somebody? Look, this is, this is really important, and this is really good dialogue, from my point of view. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think what we could do is maybe even take a look at that and, and come back, depending on what people are doing on the 24th, and kind of dissect it, you know, and say, okay, so if we, if we approach town meeting as an example, here are a couple of content-
That's the event.
Here's a couple of content ideas. This is what we would do across the board, just to show a very small sampling of how do we engage people. So we could probably figure that out for the 24th.
I would appreciate it, but I don't know how that might come.
And my hope is that by then, the template for the website will be changed, and we can sort of do some, show some real examples of how it could look, do a, do a-
Because ultimately, with the website, you know, there's, you know, once we finally get the Clear.gov actually working right, there will be a way to click to a, I don't know what you call it, a separate site that has graphics built into it. That's the whole point of it, really. So people can look at it and get a better visual view of what's the total budget, where, where's the money going, what, how does it compare to other towns? So this is linking, just like you would link some, some other things to other items, so.
The vice chair would like a link that says Clear.gov or Millis Budget, and it would go into this website called Clear.gov, which we've been working on getting up and running for about two years now. And we're going to hear about it in March, is what I was told.
Yes.
Clear.gov is going to be a very important part, from our perspective, of getting information out to the public.
Right, yeah.
Because it does it in a form that you don't have to be an accountant-
Right.
-to understand what's going on.
It's a lot of graphs.
It uses graphs, it uses high charts, it uses things that people are familiar with, can identify with, without, and a lot of comparisons to how other towns are performing with respect to how we're performing, which is very useful as individuals try to consider, is this something I want to be seeing our town doing, is the town spending the money appropriately, and so on? And you can see what's happening in the budget, which is something that's very difficult for someone not properly trained in that area right now.
Well, I just want to thank this committee again. They've been wonderful. Matt's not here tonight, but there's a lot of ingenuity seated at the table, a lot of fortitude with the, with the vendor, I would say, certainly on the front end. And, and now we're at the point where now we can start to customize things when they're back online, which will be great, take this feedback, and maybe we present a smorgasbord of how, how we would approach town meeting content, and we could play it out across the different social channels as well, as well. I think that'd be pretty fun to do, so. Yes, sir?
Thank you. I thank the committee and, and all its work on the new internet, the new website. It looks nice. He showed a clip of the Millis Police website, and if you've ever gone on there, it's, it's very user-friendly. It's very, you know, they put, they put a lot of stuff on there, so it looks nice. So this looks nice. One of the things you could add on there is a background, this building, you know, when you, when you first link on it, it would show the Veterans Memorial Building, or, you know, and stuff like that. So it would be nice. So thank you for all the hard work and, and the effort. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for spending your night with us. Any other questions? You want to come back on the 24th? Everybody has to take a look, I guess, at their schedules. Excellent. Cool. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Should we just switch our meetings to the-
Yeah, Linda can't be here, because she's going to Hawaii.
Well, that's too bad.
You're going to Hawaii? I know. I think that's an unreasonable excuse.
She had rest.
I'm sorry. Does somebody want to say something? Land, did you want to say something? I apologize. I didn't see you.
Okay.
Come to the microphone.
I just have a question for the e-subscription.
Yeah.
So the old page, I subscribed, and then I subscribed to the new one, because we transitioned to the new page. So when we change over to the new platform, do we have to subscribe again?
No, actually, all of the, it should be the same people from the old template.
Okay.
So you didn't even really need to subscribe again.
Oh, because they haven't received a lot of things.
So she hasn't gotten anything, like you.
But in theory, I, I can see that, I can see that there's 800 people subscribed. I mean, I don't know. It's a lot, or, anyway, it's something. There are email addresses in there.
It's a good size group.
That's a tenth of a-
That's a tenth of the, that's a tenth of the community. Well, I will say, you know, full disclosure, I haven't used it in a little bit because we just, you know, it's been the newer website. We haven't had that much to put out there on it, but certainly we'll try it because I do, it's always been a good medium for getting information out.
Yeah, we need to test it, because it can be useful, but we have to know it's working.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Scott. And thank you so much for coming again. Can't wait to see your name on the volunteer talent forums. Very excited. We're near the end of our meeting, folks, but we have a pretty important item left to cover, and that is that there have been a variety of executive sessions held on the part of this Board for the negotiation of the town administrator's contract. It may be stunning to some, but our town administrator is going to be closing out three years in service to Millis this spring. And so, our Board worked with him on a contract that both saves the town money, but also introduces some progressive elements that are both indicative of a new tone for leadership here, but also are very rare in government. And I'm going to ask Peter Germaine to pick up the conversation because he led the collective bargaining process with the town administrator for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Lauren has pointed out, we have had ongoing discussions for several months with the town administrator, and they've been very positive discussions. As a result, we've come up with what we think is a reasonable new contract that breaks some new ground for the town and the relationship between the town, the town administrator, and the Board. So, something that we can go forward with in the future. Let me go over a few of the items that have been up for discussion so we understand what kinds of issues we were dealing with. One of them had to do with severance. We had extended conversations so that he could feel comfortable that the town, in fact, was supportive of him, the Board was supportive, and that there was no problem for going on, that there wouldn't be some misconstrued information in terms of how things should be performed in the future. Along with that, we also worked on a new kind of compensation and dealt with performance. Now, first of all, we came up with a compensation package where we jumped him from his present salary of approximately $152,000 to $166,000. It's not that great when you look at it, when you understand that most of the towns in the area are at that level or higher, and what he's been doing has been exceptional for a number of reasons in this town. However, we, on top of that, changed the way in which he gets reviewed in the future. He, we, he has agreed, and we think this is great, that performance will be a performance evaluation for his increases on an annual basis. And this will boil down to, if you read the details, that he will get 1.5% increase, as long as performance is reasonable. But he also has the opportunity for exceptional performance to get up to another 1.5%. I hope I'm phrasing that properly. So that, in essence, depending upon how his performance goes, he could earn anywhere from a 1.5% to 3% increase on an annual basis. And that's something that has never existed in any of our contracts previously. We also worked with him on, excuse me, disability. Originally, he was getting 120 days for, that he could accrue over time for potential disability. We looked at that and said, let's rethink this. And we came up with the concept of using disability insurance to work with him. The net result of that is that by allowing for disability insurance, the town administrator has dropped his number of days of coverage from 120 to 60. Now, it turns out that we're going to pay him approximately $3,500 a year for the disability insurance. But for that, we, in essence, by dropping 60 days, get a value of $32,000 approximately that we don't have to carry as a liability on our books in the event something happens with respect to disability. The disability insurance will cover that, and so, it's a substantial benefit to both us, as a town, and to the town administrator. And we think that's another very worthwhile outcome. He goes from four to five personal days. But overall, we felt that the basics of the contract represented substantial changes in the way in which we will be working with the town administrator. There are incentives there for performance. And overall, there are also conditions that cover him in the event of disability or some other incident that would otherwise preclude him from being able to perform his job properly. So, these are, I believe, the highlights. There are a number of other issues in there, all of which, obviously, will be available for you to read about, if you would like. But I think this gives you an overview of what we've talked with him about.
Thank you, Mr. Germaine. Mr. McCaffrey, would you like to add to that?
Just to say that I am appreciative of entering in a negotiation with the town administrator. I'm glad to be able to reach agreement on a three-year contract. And I do think that it reflects his, the value of his contributions to the town, a market adjustment to make sure that we're paying him a competitive wage, but also, as my colleague has indicated, the important component of a performance-based pay program in years two and three. And that is, I think, something that this Board is very excited about, not only as it relates to the town administrator, but potentially to find ways to perhaps integrate this more broadly into compensation contracts between the town of Millis and its employees.
That having been said, now we can no longer say that the town administrator is new, because when you're on your second contract, you're not new anymore. I would like to make a motion that the Select Board adopt and enter into a three-year contract with Michael Gazinski to continue as our town administrator through, what is the date?
June 30th of 2022.
Right?
2023.
2023, sorry. Through June 30th of 2023.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the Select Board to enter into a contract with the town administrator seated to my right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries with our gratitude, and now you are no longer new. So, congratulations. Do you have any words now that you can exhale?
Yes. Well, thank you very much. And even when I arrived here three years ago, I wasn't new. I was just new here. But I'd like to thank the Board for the positive negotiations and the collaborative discussions to come up with an agreement that I think was an improved, improved one, that benefited both the town and myself. And just want to let the Board and the town know, I've been enjoying working here with all the Boards, committees, the department heads, the staff, and, most importantly, the citizens. And I look forward to hopefully many years of good work moving forward and like to thank, and thank everyone, and especially the Board for, again, a very positive negotiation experience and a good contract. So, I appreciate that.
Well, we...
And I appreciate your support.
We appreciate your leadership, and now you have a couple of extra dollars to keep the jelly beans in the office well-stocked.
And just as a side note, I wanted to add that we've been keeping Mike very busy since he's been here for three years, and he still has boxes that he has not unpacked in his office, and he is now being forced to unpack his boxes.
I will promise to have those unpacked within the next eight weeks.
Literally, he hit the ground, he has hit the ground running, I will say, and has never stopped. So, it's much appreciated that you're staying on, Mike.
Thank you, thanks, Karen.
I want to, so, congratulations. Before we adjourn, I just want to mention, these dates should be on the website calendar, but our next meeting is February 24th. As you've heard, it will be a very interesting meeting. We will be discussing sewer capacity policy as relates to growth and development. We will have just come off of the public hearing with respect to a proposed 40B building opposite Exchange Streets. We, registration to vote is this Wednesday, so that's the day after tomorrow. If you're interested in voting in the presidential primary, which is March 3rd, you need to have registered before then. And then you can turn right around and vote early because early voting begins on the week of February 24th, which is really convenient. And then we will have a variety of, we have all of our election dates spelled out. And for those people who are interested in continuing to consider either committee participation, you heard tonight from a group that's had a great time and really made a great impact, I would encourage you to go to the talent forum on the website and also to look at the posting on the Town Clerk office door, where we have 11 vacancies that are open for election. And as I've indicated before, you need not have had prior experience. You just need a commitment to doing something new and exciting for the town and to have some ideas about that. We are going to have a daytime meeting, if my colleagues can do it, on Monday, March 2nd, if that works for everybody. I don't know if that had been already cleared, so hopefully it has. So, we'll do another daytime meeting heading into the spring. And the rest of the Select Board meeting schedule is, will be, if it's not already, on the calendar, but they basically rotate pretty much to every other week. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I just have one item I'd like to just bring up in connection with the hearing for the 40B project.
Yep.
This is a hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeal.
That's correct.
I think that it would be in order for the Board to send a letter to the Zoning Board indicating our support for the proposal, which is something that we voted to accept. It's their decision, not ours. But we have indicated support for the program, for the project. And so, I think it'd be appropriate for us to, and we certainly forwarded that information to the Commonwealth. So, I think it's appropriate for us to forward it to the Zoning Board of Appeal so that they can put it on the record and consider, in their wisdom, how to proceed.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
So, we could ask the town administrator to put something together or on behalf of the Board.
Can do that, yep.
We have a couple of documents to sign at the close of the meeting. We have a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You're sleeping over. Thank you very much to Millis Community Media for your services this evening and to the town for your participation in our government and our town.